All right, before we get started, we've got 13 commenters tonight. Anyone else would like to sign up, pre-registered? Forms are in the back. We'll be distributing some mail here. We'll be ready to start in a minute. Did you, did you? It's not in here. Good evening, everybody. You are at a common council meeting of the city of Wausau. It is 5:51, Tuesday, October 28th, Wausau City Council Chambers. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask the clerk to call. Roll, please.
We have 10 voting members present.
Okay, we have a couple of items people want to speak on tonight. One of the things that we're going to be doing is filling the vacant District 5 aldermanic seat. So I think the suggestion was we, we have public comment for those seats prior to them being seated, and then public comment for the rest of the items that they will potentially be sitting in and voting on. We would do then after that. So without objection, I would ask anyone here to speak on, on the aldermanic District 5 seat filling. And I had a couple here. Maybe you can help me. The first one I have is John Radke.
Good evening. My name is John Radke, 703 Franklin Street, and I'd like to thank the mayor and the council who agreed to move us up so we can speak and don't have to stay here all night like you do. My comment is, I would hope that the council would consider the three candidates that are up on what the district, their district wants, or who the district wants. Not necessarily what you as a council person or the council would want, or who you think is the best. I really think it should be decided by the people in that district. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two that don't indicate, so let me ask. I have Deborah Chapman? Is your comment related to District 5? Okay.
As John said, my name is Deborah Chapman Mar. I live at 724 Franklin Street. We all agree that it should be the districts, the people, voting to make that decision, not the decision of who you all want. Because the people are the ones that have to deal with the person in their district. So please keep that in mind as you vote. Make sure that people get an honest, fair shake. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have another without an indication of the comment is Andrea Kuntz. Are you here to speak on that, on the aldermanic issue? Selection? Andrea? Anyone else signed up for District 5? All right, seeing none, we'll move into that interview process. There are no proclamations tonight, but the interview process, and I'll be turning it over here to the clerk. There's a memo in your packet that discusses a couple of items that we're going to need to vote on, and I'll let the clerk explain that, but we're going to draw names for the order that we speak, or that the candidates will speak, and the issues we should get out of the way first will be on the voting procedure. And I think there's a, there's a vote on, on the video. How do you want to proceed?
Yes, if you want to start by doing a random draw of the orders. So this will be the order that the candidates will introduce themselves, as well as the order that their names appear on the ballot that you all will vote on. So if you want to just draw the first name? The first one will be Aaron Greiner. And the second one will be James Wadenski, and then the third one will be Stephen Schmidt. So in the packet, if I can see that real quick, I had created a memo for just a couple of procedural items that arose when we did have three applicants who applied. The first one is, one of the eligible applicants requested a video be played while he walked up to the podium to introduce himself. The video provided is the city created and owned video that features city staff. The second issue that I just recommend that you guys discuss and decide procedure on is if, you know, if there's not a candidate who receives the majority of votes after the first round of voting, do you wish that the lowest one would then be removed and you guys would re-vote again with remaining two? Or would you like the, all three of them to remain in the pool, and then you would essentially just re-vote again until you would keep that process, until you, one of the candidates would receive six votes for tonight? Since there are 10 of you present, you would need a majority, which would be six, to be selected.
So Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. A couple of weeks ago, when we began this process of accepting the applications, when the applications were received, the issues that are outlined in the clerk's memo, she had posed to the mayor, the city attorney, and I, first specifically, the request for the playing, playing of the video. And we had some internal discussion on that and agreed that we would ask all of you as a body what you want to do with that, because the concern that I have, if the applicant requesting the video had produced his own video content, it would be different. But the video piece in question is a city-produced and city-owned asset. And there is the optic that use of that city-produced asset could give the impression that we as a body are authorizing the use of material that could give one of those candidates an advantage over the other two. It came to my mind when I recall that back in 2020, Mayor Milkie gave a speech out front using the city-owned podium and microphone to announce his reelection bid, and then put some kind of positive messaging on the cover of the city newsletter. And he was taken to task very, very promptly by the Rosenberg campaign. And the Election Commission agreed that that should not have happened, and he was fined for that. So I think we have to be very, very careful with the use of city-owned or city-produced content when there's a competition involved for a seat. So I feel like, under those circumstances, we should not allow that video. I think also to create a fair race, it seems that in that first round of voting, it would make sense that the first round of voting is similar to a primary. That should get us down to two, and then from those two in the second round, we should then emerge with one winner. So I guess we'll let you decide that, but we decided that, you know, rather than we try to make that decision two weeks ago, we would pose these questions to you, to you guys tonight as a complete body.
Okay, so it appears that there's two motions involved here. Would you care to make a motion?
Yes, well, I guess I will make a motion. All of our motions are written in the positive, right? So I guess on the video, the motion would be to allow the video, and then if you wish to disallow the video, you would all vote no. Is that correct?
I would concur with that. Sure. So we have a motion to accept the video. Do we have a second? Second from Martins. Alder Lukens. Okay, so we'll, we'll do the video first, and then we'll do the voting sequence second. Yes, Alder Lukens.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to, so I guess that doesn't matter, but say the same as far as the voting. I think we should. Well, I guess if we're voting, I don't have to even say anything. I was just going to say, I think we should eliminate one instead of continue to go, you know, to keep voting for all three, because we could be here all night then too. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so motion from Rasmussen, second from Martins, to allow the video produced by one of the candidates in his intro. Seeing nothing further? We're voting on, okay, we're voting on the usage of the video first, and we'll vote on the voting process second.
Any questions about the vote? Okay. You may begin voting. Alder Larson. Motion fails, one to nine.
Okay, up next, the manner of voting. Can we get a motion on that, Alder Lukens?
I think that was from before.
Okay.
I will make the motion then to vote, and then majority, you know, will eliminate. So the motion would be... How was it worded?
Eliminate of the three, the lowest.
The lowest, yeah. The applicant receiving the fewest anonymous.
Okay.
Okay, so a motion from Lukens on the voting procedure for elimination, and a second from Watson. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
You may begin voting. Motion passes nine to one.
Okay, any other issues we should discuss before we bring the candidates forward? Turn it over to the clerk then to call the candidates.
So then by random draw, the first applicant will be Aaron Greiner. If you want to come up to the podium and introduce yourself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mayor Denny Alders, my name is Aaron Greiner, and I reside at 1020 Stark Street here in Wausau. So for those of you here, and this is everyone else listening tonight who might not know, applicants for this question were asked to introduce ourselves and answer a question in three minutes. The question, prepare yourself for this role. This is a monumental decision to make with only three minutes of information, and some of you might not know me, so I would like to answer this question in a twofold manner. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, and in doing so, why I believe that I am a qualified candidate for this position. First and foremost, I'm a lifelong learner, educator, student of history, and problem solver. And I believe in educated electorate and increased civic involvement is one of the most needed forces for positive change and growth in our world today. Hence why I'm standing here in front of you tonight. I can speak from experience in saying that assuming any role in local government is a huge undertaking with numerous responsibilities and a very high learning curve. There's an incredible amount of information to acquire and process to do this role effectively, and I know I'm willing and able to do so. As for who I am and what I stand for, I am a local small business owner. I'm a steward of Marathon County history, and above all, I'm a dad. In my day-to-day routine, I try to live my life as selflessly as possible and conduct myself and my business with integrity, honesty, and compassion, even sometimes when it's really, really, really hard to do so. In keeping with that tenet, I volunteer with several local and national organizations, and I try to give back to my community whenever possible, because communities just like this one have done so much for me throughout my life, and I believe it has helped me to become the person that I am today. I believe that I have been a servant for the greater good for most of my adult life, and I would welcome the opportunity to continue this service by representing the people of District 5. To prepare for the role, I have read and understood the statutes establishing and granting authority to the common council, along with the roles and responsibilities of council members. This includes what I believe are things that council members should and should not do. I have read all applicable packets for this in several prior meetings and watched the various committee livestreams relating to tonight's meeting agendas, and I feel that I have a sound understanding of the issues presented here before us tonight, and I am confident in voting on the matters at hand if asked to do so. In closing, let's not forget while we're here. Many of you have had the privilege of knowing and working alongside Alder Gisselman for far longer than I have, and you all knew the kind of man he was, and his values, and what he stood for, and his ability to make you smile even if you didn't agree with him. I'll be the first to say that I cannot promise you to be the same man as Alder Gisselman, and I don't know any person worthy of saying they could be. However, I can promise you that I will do everything within my ability to try and be the kind of official that Gary, well, Alder Gisselman, would have wanted all of us to be and try to live up to his legacy. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have James Wadenski.
Good evening, Alders, mayor, staff. My name is James Wadenski. Some of you know me, some of you might not. I'm a lifelong resident of this community. Lived in my district, District 5, since 1983. Served as alder in that district, 2020 to 2022, proudly. And I loved that position. It was a great opportunity to help this community during a bad time, of course, in history. I have a family of two children, married for 43 years to my lovely wife Carla. My children live in the community. My parents lived in the community all their lives. I went to school in the community, went to Washington School. Behind the Grand Theater was Washington School. Went to Horseman, graduated Wausau East, North Central Technical College. I had the honor to become a police officer for the city of Wausau in 1980. Served 34 years. 10 years on patrol. Eight years in crime prevention, officer safety, schools. Those were the great eight years. Loved working in the schools with the kids, the positive things. Finished out my career as lieutenant, patrol division, mostly working afternoons and nights, because I didn't want to get up at five in the morning. I retired with 34 years, went to work for the sheriff's office part-time, working in the courthouse. Met many people in the courthouse. When a person would come in, I worked the front door. My goal, no matter what they did in life, if they're here to see their PO or a court trial, whatever, to make them smile. I'm a member of the Optimus Club for over 30 years, along with my friend, Mr. Gisselman, who was a member with me. I'm a member of the Elks Club, a member of the Historical Society in the community. My goal in this position is to give citizens good service at a reasonable price. This council has a hard job of making this city great, and I want to help them with that job. I want to give our citizens the best we can give them without taxing them too high. It's a hard thing to do, and I know every day we look at that. I just saw the meeting before us where there was discussion on what appeared to be a small issue, but it's a big issue to some. They all have to be considered. I won't take any more, any more of your time. Thank you for letting me apply for this position. Good night, and no matter what happens, I support you all.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Stephen Schmidt.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Schmidt. I'm a 32-year resident of District 5. While reading through my letter of interest, you'll have noticed a number of different organizations that I have been involved with in our community and have served in my district and in my neighborhood. For the past 10 years, I have been very active in the Forest Park neighborhood, which has carved out of Districts 5 and 6. This experience alone probably has prepared me for the alder position. My role in that organization has been to lead meetings and events. At our monthly meetings, I take notes, concerns expressed by all the, all that are in attendance. I also prepare responses to phone calls and emails when we receive them. At our monthly meetings, we have a Wausau Police Department representative. The city alders attend, county supervisors. Several guest speakers have attended our meetings. And we also have a representative who is a real estate agent. As an alder, I'll be able to bring the concerns of District 5 residents directly to the common council or to the appropriate committee. I've been attending the finance committee and common council meetings regularly in order to gain some knowledge of how some of the processes work here at City Hall. As an alder, I will be able to do a better job connecting District 5 residents with the proper city department, or I will contact the department myself to help resolve any issue a resident may have. I will take the District 5 residents' viewpoints into consideration when voting. Staying in contact with my neighbors in District 5, when they reach out to me with a question or a concern, will be promptly answered by a telephone call or an email message. I believe District 5 residents would benefit from having a neighborhood group, and once I would be settled in as an alder, I have a contact who I believe would be willing to help me spearhead that effort. In closing, I have also submitted 12 letters of recommendation, one recognition, thank you note, and 111 support signatures from District 5 residents who would like me to represent them as their alderperson. Please consider their voices as to who they would like to fulfill the remainder of this term. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
We're ready to vote then. I have a ballot with each, I have the three candidates' names listed in order that they were randomly drawn tonight, and then each of your names are at the bottom of your sheet. You can either mark a checkmark or an X in the right column, and then I will collect them at the end, and we'll tally them and then share the results. Please let me know if you do need a pen to mark your ballot.
Yeah, if anyone's here for the finance or the budget public hearing, we, we won't be starting that prior to 6:30 as that was announced.
Should I stop the meeting? Should I just say it to that? Oh, you can work it.
I don't want to waste any of this time on that meeting, but would it force us to do something if it gets us? But is it both getting out?
Agreements, we need to come back to. Council, we have worked the contract.
Right.
So we just need to redo the contract.
We got to work on that.
And the work.
Yeah. So I'm going to need to have help on that.
Right.
Okay, so we did not get a majority. Where's the tally sheet? We had, with five votes was James Wodenski, with three votes was Aaron Greiner, and with two votes was Stephen Schmidt. So we are going to vote again based on your motion before, so we'll do it, we'll vote again with James Wodenski and Aaron Greiner. So bring your belts around in a moment. Okay, so then with the second round of voting, we had James Wodenski receiving four votes and Aaron Greiner receiving six votes. So Aaron Greiner will be appointed to the District 5 Alderman for the remainder of the term ending April 21st, 2026. So if you would come up, I will swear you into your seat.
Congratulations, Mr. Greiner.
The Office of District 5 Alderperson.
In and for the city of Wausau.
In and for the city of Wausau.
In Marathon County.
In Marathon County.
For a term ending April 21st, 2026.
For a term ending April 21st, 2026.
In and for, but have not yet entered.
But have not yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear or affirm.
Swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will affirm the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of this office.
Of this office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You sign your name on this line.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Steve, for entering the process tonight. So do we have a, do we have a laptop ready? We're ready to go? Okay. Wait, what? Okay, so now we can, we have no presentation tonight. That presentation for the Children's Imaginarium will be rescheduled. Up first, do we want to do minutes first here? So we're working with a new agenda software, and the order of business as listed in the rules is now shows our minutes first. So we have two minutes. I lost my computer here.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, another new rule we have is this city of Wausau Public Comment Statement. I'll read that while we're getting Mr. Greiner logged in. "City of Wausau recognizes the value of public comment on local issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on city matters. Please identify yourself by name, state your address. Each statement made by a participant should be limited to three minutes. Direct all comments to the chair, not to staff, members, or other participants. People addressing the city council shall not disrupt the orderly course of business. The chair values civil discourse and may interrupt, terminate, or prohibit public comment that do not adhere to these rules." All right, we're on the consideration of minutes from the preceding two meetings, September 9th and September 23rd, regular common council minutes. Would entertain a motion?
You have one from Watson?
Motion from Watson, second from Hanky. Any concerns, questions, changes, typos? Seeing none?
May I begin voting? Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, you got them in order, and we had two come in. All right, 13 coming up. I'll read your, read the name first and then followed by who's on deck. Please limit yourself to three minutes. We have up first Jim Rosenberg, and on deck is David Ekman.
I had to bring the large print edition because I'm getting to be that age. So I'm Jim Rosenberg, and I live in Rhinelander. I am not speaking on behalf of the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, where I serve as a regional economic director for a seven-county area. But suffice to say, I have more than a passing interest in economic development and in the city of Wausau. When I joined the city council in 1998, we were in deep trouble. Our downtown was failing outside of the mall, and store vacancies were high, turnover was high, and we did a lot of things, little things, like the 400 block. And we were able to build and sent about $100 million worth of development downtown over a relatively short period of time. And I'm happy to see you're continuing on with that. I'm staying at the Jefferson Street Inn tonight, and I'm right across from the Foundry, which I think you had just in the last week an opening ceremony. One of the early projects that we did back then was the building that we're talking about tonight. It was built for Wausau benefits, and the idea was to get a bunch of people downtown, and it turned out to be catalytic. But it took a lot of guts at the time because we had to do something to make that happen, and that was building the Garage Mahal, the Jefferson Street Ramp. And so that wasn't quite $20 million, but it was almost. And of course, if all we were ever going to get was Wausau benefits, it would have been a bad investment. We would have never broke even. But it's fair to say that the Garage Mahal has been catalytic. We have now an opportunity to create 52 living units out of the Wausau Benefits Building, and that averages out to less than, for the city contribution of $750,000, less than $14,500 per unit. And believe me, if we could do that across this country, we would solve our housing crisis. It's a pretty, pretty fair contribution, and it's also tax-incentive financing, which a lot of people like to say, well, that's my money. That's my taxpayer money. Well, it's not Joe and Jane Sixpack's money. It's money that comes from the revenue stream created from the project. So you're protecting your tax base with a stable, long-term use. I'm running out of time here. But I'm going to tell you that you're going to have other opportunities as a result of doing this. It's going to make that property where the Scott Street Steak and Pub was much more valuable, the vacant property where the, where the McClan Street Ramp was, much more valuable. And some of the things that we got with the Jefferson Street Ramp, you think about the Dudley Tower, the Jefferson Street Inn, which wasn't even thought of at that time. A lot of things happened. So I hope you'll pass it. I think it's a really smart investment. You're getting a lot done for a bargain. Thanks.
Thank you. Up next is David Ekman, and on deck is Andrea Kuns. Is Andrea here yet? Wasn't here earlier. If Andrea's not here, after that is Raleigh Lockrey.
Good evening. I'm Dave Ekman, President and CEO of the Greater Wausau Chamber of Commerce, 209 West Washington Street. Alder, congratulations. Mayor Alders, here to speak in support of the request for the TIF Assistant for 11 Scott Street. In preparation for this, looking back in some of the historical context, Jim touched on it a little bit. When we went back, McDevco Chamber, at this point in time in the year 2000, along with the city's partnership in CDBG monies, and the Judd S. Alexander Foundation, situated the property right there on First and Scott for redevelopment. As Jim mentioned, the Wausau Benefits Building, and then Whifley, two companies, and then eventually UMR, and some other insurance products in that building as well. COVID. COVID hit all of us, especially in the office marketplace. So here we have a major investment that took place in the year 2000. We're 25 years later. We're four years removed from COVID, and we have an opportunity here with Lockrey Development to reinvent this building. It will not, at this point in time, it will not support all office. So having the ability with Lockrey to think differently in terms of the multifamily and then the office down below, we have to be thinking this way creatively. Right now, the building as a revenue source is underperforming, is not performing actually. The garage is not performing. It's underperforming. So we have an opportunity. This one, this project is a bit, bit easier because the building is there. You have a developer who is a proven entity in the Wausau market, without question. He grew up here. So I'm going to ask you right now. What I'd like you to do is just think of yourself, position yourself about 2,000 feet up of that intersection, looking down at that intersection of First and Scott. And you see what's happening to where the former Wausau Center Mall was, and now the Foundry, in the investment that Lockrey has made in terms of turning that compass properties and reinventing Washington Square. And what's happening then, if you look, the historical context of what this And what's happening then, if you look, the historical context of what this city has committed to do with TIF along the north and south parts of the river, critically important. This is an opportunity for this community, this city, to develop a partnership and move forward with Raleigh Lockery. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing Andrea. How about Raleigh? Raleigh Lockery.
Hi, everyone. I'd just like to first thank the Alder Persons, the mayor, and the city staff for all that you do. It's amazing, just being back involved in this whole process. Kudos to all of you. It's a lot of work and great efforts, and thank you for our whole community. Couple of points I'd like to mention on this because this is kind of a different situation. We have the opportunity to give back a lot with this project above and beyond the apartments. We obviously want to put 52 apartments, it'd be very affordable units, what we're calling the missing middle. You know, it's not high end, it's not low end, it's right in the middle price range. There's a definite need for this in the community. It'll bring more people downtown that are not there, and you've done an amazing job with the downtown so far, and we just want to have one more piece to even improve it beyond that. But I do want to hit on a couple of financial pieces on this. This building was built, like they explained, by a different firm 25 years ago. And when they did that, there was an agreement with the city where that building has 480 parking stalls assigned to it. We have control of those 480 parking stalls. Within this agreement, the mayor and the staff has done a great job negotiating for the city, for us to basically give that control back to the city, which it's a huge profit, so it's a money generator. So basically, we would be committed for paying for 150 stalls, it's approximately $50,000 you'd be paying back, those 330 stalls you're going to give back, if you look at it, that should generate at least another $50,000 a year. You look over 10 years, I mean, you're talking conservatively $800,000 to $1 million, to $1 million point two of revenue coming from the parking ramp next door. The other thing is the tax benefit. The tax in the building right now, for where it stands, if we don't go with this improvement, it's going to go down from where it is, the assessment. So that's the other unfortunate thing that would happen. If we do this, it's going to go up. And, you know, basically, it could be $11, $12 million, where it's basically under eight right now, it's probably dropped to three or four. So we're talking about a $7 or $8 million increase in taxes if we go ahead of this project. Again, if you look at the tax basis, you're talking in a similar range, about 10 years, another $1 million of extra money. So that's why they asked for 750. It's needed in the project, it's very expensive to do renovations, it's a very expensive building in general just to renovate, the structure of it, the windows, the things we have to do to convert it. So that's why we really need your help, appreciate your help. We feel it's a great project for downtown and very much needed. And again, I thank you all for all that you do. You did an amazing job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm showing Owen Jones. Not seeing him. Jamie Hoover, and then up next is Christine Martins.
I am Jamie Hoover. I want to say thank you guys for everything. I live at 4023 Briarwood Ave. in Wausau on the east side there. I'm here about the licensing for the pets. I don't know, numbers were thrown around in the last meeting like crazy, like, they didn't matter, they're just pulling numbers out of hats. This is 108.33% increase in the cost to a person for an altered pet. So we are jumping from, right now, it's $20 with an $8 discount, so that brings it down to a $12 fee per cat or dog that's altered. Now we're talking a $30 fee with a $5 discount. That's 108% difference. That's crazy. I have five animals, I have three dogs, two cats, all licensed, all microchipped. For me, that would be a grand total of $125 versus the 95 I currently pay. It's crazy. Now you're talking about, and I mean, I can afford this, I work, my husband works, you know, that's not the issue. It's, you're putting this on people that are low-income, people that have the emotional support animals, people that need their animals, and you're expecting them to pay 108% more for one pet. That's crazy. They're saying that they're discounting the microchip from $8 down to $5 because it was an odd number. They wanted an even number. That is no excuse to restrict that discount to a $5 discount versus eight. It's been off by $2 for how many years? Now they want to change it to an even number? Let's see some real reasons for these increases in prices. Let's see some itemizations. Let's look at, what the city really needs is a humane officer who can enforce a program that communicates with the vet offices, so we can get all the city's animals on paper in a database, and we can get them all licensed. Right now, there are so many people in the city that don't even know they have to license their animals. I've got a cat, it never leaves the house, I don't have to license it. That's how people think about it. I created an Ask Wausau group post, and the fallback from people is just, oh, I didn't know I had to license my pet, I just moved here, I didn't know I had to do that. Let's start with some awareness. Let these pet owners know. There's a lot of education missing in this aspect, and I don't think raising pet fees just because the numbers need to be even, or the county is raising it a little bit more, there's other areas around the city, Cronewatt, or Mozzany, Merrill, Stevens Point, I mean, they all charge less than Wausau. Wausau is very high-priced. So I just want to say, as a board, please, you know, really look at these numbers, get some feedback from how many pets are actually licensed. There was a mention of $3,000 in one of the finance meetings, that's what the city would expect. If you're looking at the increase of $13, that's only 230 pets. You can't tell me there's only 230 pets licensed within the city limits. So there's a lot more that needs to be asked, a lot more questions, a lot more information that needs to be provided before they just start throwing more fees at us as Wausau residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Martins, followed by Carl Martins.
Gee, you get the whole family. Good evening, I am Christine Martins, 1228 Arthur Street, and I wanted to speak briefly in regard to the landmarking of the, well, what I would call the youth building or the East Gate building at Marathon Park. When it came out of the Historic Preservation Commission, it asked that the full building be landmarked, which would include the stone wing building as well as the white part. When it came out of Plan Commission, I believe it was four to one, so it was not unanimous. They had changed it or amended the request to just the stone wing. I am here to request that you approve this as it came out of the Historic Commission. It is the full building that is historic. Martin Luther King, as you've probably read your packet, spoke there, many other things. Yes, it has, the white part has been changed over the years, but now is the time to preserve it as it is. The protections need to be put in place now before anything else happens, not later as a fire drill. So like I say, my request is very simple. Please put this landmarking through as the full building. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Carl Martins, followed by Liz Went.
Carl Martins, 1228 Arthur Street, and I'm also here to talk about the youth building over in Marathon County Park. And I want the building to be landmarked fully, not just a piece. That's a slippery slope that we can go down, labeling which part is historic, which part is not historic within a historic building. For example, look at the White House. That's a whole historic building, but not the east wing, I guess, huh? But my point is, I would like it to be amended, back to the Historical Commission, what they said, and landmark the whole building. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Went, followed by Tim Parker.
Good evening, it's good to see all of you again, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, Liz Went, 814 Adams Street, Wausau, Wisconsin. I'm here to speak in favor of the public financing for 11 Scott Street. So a little bit of background that you might not know about me and this project is I loved this idea of an office-to-residential conversion for that space well before this was ever talked about. The building had been mostly vacant, I think, at the point that I was looking at it one day and just going like, gosh, that would be a really great spot to live downtown. It offers kind of a middle ground of amenities, knowing that market rate is going to have certain things that a middle, kind of a missing middle cannot. And we already have a lot of li-tech projects in the downtown area, especially by unit number. If you think about, we've got Landmark, Federal Lofts, Atrium Lofts, Charlie Quarter Flats, and now Westside Commons within a very close distance of downtown. So this is a really amazing opportunity, I think, for the city to convert, like, we have a glut of open office space right now, and we need residential units, especially downtown. We have an amazing downtown. Most of you know, I used to be the Director for Wausau River District 10 years ago, so I have a big heart for downtown redevelopment, and this is one of those projects that would really move our already great Main Street community forward. As you know, we're a great American Main Street, award-winning community, we achieved a gold-tier status, but we are still not at the healthy...
[inaudible]
That was new. I don't know, that's, yeah, AI at its finest, right? So, but we're still not at a healthy 15% rate of community residents living in the downtown. And that is what, any standard that you look at, when you look at downtown development, that's what it takes to sustain a healthy community with all the character of local restaurants and retail stores and things like that. This building, this conversion of two floors to 52 units would definitely help move us forward. It would also bring the rungs of the ladder closer together. If you think about it, again, I mentioned we have market rate, we have li-tech housing, but we have nothing in the middle, and none of it can happen without public financing. When I first started looking at that project and thinking, gosh, this would be a great conversion, I wonder what it takes to do that, my research showed immediately that every office-to-residential conversion you can find in a city required public financing. A lot of them are in states that have tax abatements as an option, Wisconsin does not have that, we only have TIF as an option. And luckily, we have a TIF district that can afford to do this. So this is a really good opportunity to invest and create more momentum downtown. Jim did a great job of addressing what this means for surrounding property values. So I think in closing, these office-to-residential conversions require a lot of time commitment, creativity, and this project really brings all of those. It's not just the but-for test, but it's also meeting community needs and desires. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tim Parker, on deck is Matt Rowe.
Good evening, I'm Tim Parker, 6 North Hill Road, Wausau. And I knew that Liz is a new mom, but I didn't know she was Charlie Brown's mom. And she stole everything I was going to say, so this might be a little shorter than three minutes, hopefully. But I'm in support of approving the term sheet for 11 Scott Street. It supports workforce retention, you know, having people who live in these types of apartments be able to live near downtown reduces turnover and helps retain talent. It boosts local businesses, a larger resident population in the downtown core increases demand for retail, dining, entertainment, supporting small businesses, and contributing to tax revenue. It attracts investment also. Mixed-in-cum neighborhoods are viewed as stable, vibrant, attractive, and private investment in infrastructure, retail, and culture will increase. The Lockery Development Group has proven to be a good partner for Wausau, and especially even more so now for downtown Wausau. And as Liz mentioned, many downtowns do have the missing middle, and this is maybe one piece in starting to make sure that we don't have the missing middle. Often, people in that category end up priced out in being able to live in downtown communities. Also, making sure that these underutilized buildings become more utilized, and especially with residential uses, creates around-the-clock vitality for a downtown community, and that helps beyond office hours, improving safety, public perception and vibrancy, and having more eyes on the street. It also supports cultural and civic life. A busy downtown is a healthy downtown. Like I said, Liz gave my statements, so I'm going to try to keep this a little bit short. Main key for me is, we need these buildings to be full. It's a great building, it's kind of the entryway to downtown Wausau, and having people living there really helps us utilize the sunk costs that you've already put into supporting that kind of infrastructure downtown. So I'm in full support. More eyes on the street in that area especially will be helpful.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Matt Rowe, on deck is Noah Phillips.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. My name is Matt Rowe, 1709 Tall Oaks Drive in Wausau, District 6. I'm here today in a couple capacities. I'm a practicing attorney and president of the Ruderware Law Firm. We're in the Dudley Tower, right next door to the 11 Scott Street property that's being discussed. I also serve as the Board Chair for the Greater Wausau Prosperity Partnership, oftentimes referred to as GWPP. I'd like to express my strong support for the proposed term sheet and financial support. This project represents a strategic investment in our downtown that aligns with shared goals around economic vitality, housing affordability, and responsible public-private collaboration. A little background, earlier in 2025, Synergy, Central Wisconsin Regional Economic Development Organization with whom GWPP collaborates, worked with the North Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission to produce a regional housing study in response to growing concerns over housing affordability. The study findings highlight that our region's struggle to attract the level of new housing development that's essential to support the local workforce demand. As a result, home and rent prices, as we all know, have gone up, and it's difficult to attract and retain residents. I see this at our law firm, young lawyers, paralegals, legal assistants. When I moved here in 1997, you know, they were building starter homes in Weston, one after another. That doesn't happen anymore. Synergy Housing Study identified a need for 521 new housing units before 2040. That's a big number, and I would submit that it's underestimated if we want to grow as a community and fund all the projects that people need and, you know, make this a vibrant community. So a lot of folks have articulated some of the other benefits of the proposed project with 11 Scott Street. I'm just going to hit on a couple more items in my time remaining. I recognize that $750,000 is a lot of money, and I understand that people have differing views on the merits of public investment in private projects. I'm reminded of an old saying, you can't cut your way to prosperity, you have to make smart investments with city funds, and I view this as an opportunity, having a good return on that investment. Here are a few reasons. There's a lot of protections in there for the city. It only, you know, the loan, it's structured as a loan, it only gets forgiven if the project is completed. I also think the parking ramp, which has been alluded to, is an underappreciated aspect of this. Others have commented on the fact that you're going to turn that asset into an income-generating asset right out of the gate, and you're going to have, you're going to retain control of a big number of stalls that will help further develop the property surrounding that ramp. So I appreciate the time, appreciate all that you do, and I urge you to support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Noah Phillips, on deck is Mark Craig.
Hello there, my name is Noah Phillips, and I live in the town of Ringel. However, I'm a certified general appraiser that's been serving this market for approximately 15 years. This is in respect to 11 Scott Street. A lot of the points that have been made were my points as well, very good points. One of the things that I will say in regard to Ms. Went's comment is, as an appraiser, in the height of COVID, office space reached a historical low of a vacancy of 85% across the nation. Post-COVID, that has reached a stabilized level of approximately 60% to 65% across the country, meaning that office vacancy throughout the country is still at... country, meaning that office vacancy throughout the country is still at or near 40%. Most of these projects will not reach historical occupancies again, just because there isn't a surplus of office space. I receive phone calls regularly from municipalities throughout central Wisconsin saying, how can we bring reasonable housing to our markets? And a lot of times, what I, what I tell them is, if you can repurpose existing properties that are not currently serving their highest and best use, that is a great avenue to, to renovate existing buildings at a cheaper cost than it would be to build new. One of the other things that I would say is that the overall value of the neighboring properties downtown would certainly be affected. Many times, when there isn't reinvestment or repurposing of these properties, those properties will go into dilapidation at some point, reduce your tax base, and, and hurt the overall community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Left a little time on the clock there. Mark Craig and last call on Andrea.
Mark Craig, 3246 North 8th Street, Wausau. Thank you all for some time tonight, and as you consider 11 Scott Street. You know, I've been working to improve downtown Wausau for 30 years now to do my small part in all of this. And, you know, it's a passion that I have that Raleigh shares, and I'm really enjoying the time that we've been working together this short time. As you know, he just made a major investment downtown Wausau and is about to convert Washington Square, doing some exterior upgrades, adding nine new apartments. He's doing workforce development housing over at Colby &amp; Colby, which is about to open over in your neighborhood, Lou. And, you know, to see those kind of projects come to life and to look at housing in a different way, we know there's been high-end housing that's been added with River, Riverlife, and now Foundry on Third, that we were, some was at the other night. But what has been missing is that middle, that $1,100 one-bedroom, $1,300 two-bedroom. And for a $750,000 investment on the city, it's a tremendous return. Raleigh mentioned the parking, just right out of the gate, you would regain 330 parking stalls in your control, 150 would be with this development. And once people start living in the building, the city would generate $55,000 in new revenue that doesn't exist right now. The building's currently assessed at $7.8 million. I don't believe it's worth $7.8 million. I know Raleigh bought it for $250,000. That tells you right there, there's not a lot of value in a vacant, dead office building, which this is, right? At the heart of our community. What we're trying to do is bring this building back to life, some, breathe some life into this, converting two floors to residential use. That has not been done in Wausau before, and it takes a tremendous amount of expense to do it. Think of plumbing, HVAC, ceilings, windows. People think that because he bought it for $250,000, and the city's assessed it for $7.8 million, that he can go to the bank and borrow against that equity. I know, Doug, I think you mentioned it the other day, but it just doesn't work that way. There's negative cash flow today on this building. Without the assistance, it simply won't happen. We need your help. This TIF is money that's come from that develop, from that TID district to be reinvested in the TID district. And Jim Rosenberg's talked about it tonight. For $14,500 roughly, you can create 52 residential units by assisting Raleigh in this development, and I hope that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. We had a lot of paperwork up here. Did we miss anyone? Seeing none. We'll close public comment. We have one committee report. Do we need a vote on that, or we're filing that? We're filing that unless any objections for Board of Public Works. Up next is the consent agenda. Entertain a motion. Motion from Watson, second from Neal. Anything need to be removed? Seeing none.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay, under item 10, we have three ordinances and resolutions to discuss. First item is file 25-1005. It's a joint ordinance from Plan Commission and Historic Preservation Commission amending section 2.82.055 designation of East Gate Hall at 1201 Stewart Avenue as a local historic landmark. Motion from Watson, second from Lukens. Comment from Martins.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Let's speak a bit about this, the resolution for the, the historic designation for the East Gate Hall over in Marathon Park. Or as many of us who have been lifelong 4Hers, me since, I think, 1980, know it as the youth building. So if I slip up and say youth building, that's probably the reason why. When this was brought to the Historic Preservation Commission back last summer, Alder Gisselman had a, a good part in, in bringing forth this building to the commission, although he was no longer with us when the vote was actually cast in, in historic pres, in, in historic preservation to designate the East Gate Hall as a historic landmark. And the reason why this was, they, they selected this building is really twofold. One is, most notably, the stone wing, the, the granite portion of the, of the building that was built in the, if you read the newspaper articles, 19, in the 1930s, as part of the NYA, the National Youth Administration, which came out of the Works Progress Administration, locally sourced granite was used in the construction of that building. But if you read the articles that were in your packet, this was, was supposed to be a four-unit, a four-unit construction with the, a variety of uses for exhibition, for sports, for activities, for presentation of kitchens, dormitory even, just a, a multi-purpose building that would be used at, at the fairgrounds. I think one of, one of the lines I wanted to, to catch out here is, structures would be a large arena-type building, which could be used as an exhibition building for 4-H club members during the Wisconsin Valley Fair and exposition, as a convention hall and an indoor hockey rink during the remainder of the year. I think it's a little small as a hockey rink. This was a newspaper article that was, that was published in 1939. So the, the original intent of the, of the stone wing and the youth building was for, was, was the complete, what we, we see here in its, in its entirety here. And I, and that's the reason why it was chosen to landmark the entire building and not just the stone wing. Now, the interior of the youth, of the East Gate Hall has been substantially modified since, I remember it back in the early 80s in 4-H. I mean, the stage is gone, the windows have been replaced, but the outside exterior and facade are mostly still intact. And that's the important part in historic preservation, is not so much the, what's going on inside the building, but the exterior, it's the exterior that counts. And the exterior of the, of, of the wooden part, the, of the East Gate Hall is, is still mostly intact, with the stone wing is completely intact, the exterior facades. So if it pleases anybody, I wish to make an amendment that we, that we designate the entire East Gate Hall, both the stone wing and the wooden structure, as a historic landmark. I'm gonna press my amend button there.
So we have a motion to amend.
No, she's not amending.
Got it.
I'll accept it.
Okay.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Vicki.
I'm gonna have to restart this.
You said wooden structure?
Yeah, the entire. The entire structure, just to...
stone wing and the entire structure.
Okay, does that meet what you expected, Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion from Martin, second from Tierney. Discussion on the motion to amend.
There were two people in the queue, Alder Neal and Alder Killian.
Alder Neal? You were in the queue.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess what I would say is relevant to this as well, the amended resolution. It's kind of a testament to the persistence of brand loyalty when you think about the, the youth building thing. Years ago, in my previous career, I worked at an ad agency here in town, and we were tasked by the City Parks Department, I guess, to look at rebranding the youth building. And the East Gate Hall moniker falls right in my lap, so I'm sorry if it busted anybody's, you know, nostalgia. But yeah, I, I can't see us doing partial, you know, landmarking. Next, we're gonna have, oh, you know, the door on that building is a landmark, you know, or the steeple on that church is a landmark, but the church isn't. I mean, we've got to, you know, it's the location, it's the address, it's the facility. I went there a few times, like for Great Northern Blue Society concerts. And yeah, to me, it's a place, and it deserves a place in history as a whole. So I would support the amended resolution.
Thank you. Alder Killian, did you comment on the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too wish to support that amendment. We were fortunate enough to have three members of the Historic Preservation Committee speak with us this evening, and I think they probably are most aware of what needs to be done with the building. And I would just also like to speak in support of that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So on behalf of the county, I guess I have to speak up on this too. This, the, the designation of East Gate Hall did go through the Park Commission, as well as the HR Finance Committee of the county. The city has set a precedent of doing a partial building just prior to this. I believe it was with St. John's Church, where there was an addition that was not included in the historical designation, which is where they got this direction from. The outside of the building, as previously stated, has been significantly altered in the packets in the previous, and I don't know if it's in this packet, where they built the pictures of the building back in 1967 and the pictures today. And there is significantly less windows along the entire building. All of the upper structure windows, or the clear story windows, are all gone. So the, the building is still white, and it still has generally the same shape, but it has been significantly altered, both outside and inside on the main area. So when looked at this by the Park Commission, which is members of the city council, as well as the county board, looked at this in the HR Finance Committee meeting of the county board, they are okay with the stone wing because that has been unchanged, has much significance, has not been altered, has no desire to alter. But the main structure of East Gate Hall is significantly different, inside and out, other than it's still white. And it is not used, or hasn't been used, as it has in the past. There has been significant changes. There isn't any significant changes planned on the county's side, as far as I'm aware of, in our long-term plans or anything. We did just do a renovation to it with our ARPA dollars the last two years, where we replaced windows, flooring, ceiling, air conditioning, air handling, and that sort of thing. That is what the county will continue to use it for. However, and it is a significant use for the Wisconsin Valley Fair. However, we do already have historical significant buildings in that park that have not been altered, such as our exhibition building, our cattle barns, our show ring, and those will continue to remain in their state, as with this building most likely too. However, this building has not been preserved like those have in the past. So you have a memo in your packet from the county asking that you stick with the stone wing only. And unfortunately, I was not able to attend the public hearing for the Historic Preservation Committee, which is why I was not there to bring the counties forward. That's completely on me, but that's why this was presented to Plan Commission as it was, and the memo was included. So on behalf of the county, that is the request.
Thank you. And just to point out then to Ms. Polly's point is, this did come as a whole to the Plan Commission, and we did have a motion. Our, our new soft, our new printouts don't show what the votes were, but it was a, there was a motion to amend it to the stone wing only, and then it, that, that passed 4 to 1, and then the main motion then also passed 4 to 1. And I'm not remembering exactly. It looks like Alder Watson made the motion to break that out. Are you recalling anything on that? Those are the notes, and that was Plan Commission. So where was the other, the Historic Preservation came as a whole? Right here. On previous page. Okay, and that was a 6 to 1 vote. As it is now, and it was, it was amended at Plan Commission. Up next is Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I guess I find the opposition to landmarking the entire building from the county's perspective confusing. Even if there's precedent for landmarking a part of a building, it, logistically, it makes less sense to landmark part of a building, especially given the history and the age of many or most of the other structures within that park. Even if there have been renovations or changes made to the East Gate Hall, it would seem to make sense to me that if landmarking essentially protects that structure for future renovations and future projects, that, that then at least would cause there to be some deference to the original intention, the design, the purpose of that building. And so, you know, to just protect the stone wing and then let whatever could possibly happen to the rest of the building really loses the value of protecting half of it, I guess. It, it makes no sense to me. And, you know, does historic landmarking at times hinder what can be changed and what materials can be used and, and, you know, how a building can be altered? Sure. But if we really are interested in protecting those structures, all of them basically out there, it would make sense that this building would be protected in its entirety and not just a small segment. So I also am intending to support the landmarking of the entire building. I think that really is the only sensible way to do it. And then in the future, if there are renovations or alterations, I would hope that someone would pull out those historical photographs and those historical drawings. And if there's projects that, that are happening there, which there are none in the immediate future, but if there are some, I would hope that those original design characteristics would be revived. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any further comment on the amendment? Okay, so the amendment is designation of East Gate Hall, 1201 Stewart Avenue, as a local historic landmark. Is that the?
Motion to amend to designate the entire East Gate Hall, including the stone wing and the entire structure.
Okay, so there'd be two votes. One is on the amendment to, to change it to the entire, and then the second will be to vote on that. Claire?
So you may begin voting on the amendment. The amendment passes 9 to 2.
Original as amended.
Original as amended. Okay, so now we're voting on the main motion as amended. And we have a couple of comments yet, Mr. Neal, or is that a holdover?
I already had mine, thanks.
Okay, and Terry? All right. Any further comments on the main motion? Seeing none.
This would be voting as amended, yep. Okay, so you may be, you may begin voting on the item as amended. Motion passes nine to two, as amended.
Okay, up next, this item is going to be pulled. This is 241109R. With some constructive feedback, the agenda was mislabeled, citing DOT. It should have been the DNR. And we'll have an opportunity to see this item a number of times. It'll be at Economic Development on the fourth. That'd be next week. Next item is file number 24-1109. It's a resolution from Finance Committee authorizing the modification of fees to the City of Wausau Fees and License Schedule adopted pursuant to Municipal Code 3.04, I'm sorry, 3.40.010A. It's a 2025 comprehensive fee schedule, and I missed that meeting tonight. What did it pass?
So this is really, we're just changing the pet licenses. The full fee schedule will be brought back for 2026 at a... Oh, I'm sorry. This is really, we're only focusing on the pet licenses. Right now, the full 2026 fee schedule will be brought back at a future meeting to council. The county made some changes. So, you know, when we issue a license for a dog or a cat, a portion of that fee goes to Marathon County. So the county is changing the dog and cat, or the dog fees for spayed and neutered from... They're increasing the spayed-neutered by $7, and they're increasing the not-spayed-neutered by $10. So we propose adding that so that we would recover the full amount that we have historically, and then adding an additional $3 just to recover inflationary increases in processing the licenses. So that's what is before you today. I believe at the meeting, Finance had lengthy discussions about this.
Okay, so we have a motion from Sarah Watson to amend, is that correct?
Yeah, I do. I would like to amend it, but I thought I could talk first. I don't know if I pressed amend a little prematurely. Do I have to amend first?
I'll ignore it.
Okay, and then I'll do, okay. So may I, may I speak, Mayor?
Alder Watson.
Okay, awesome. All right, so we did have a discussion about this, just trying to find a compromise at Finance, because as one of our residents mentioned, I mean, 108% increase, which would be after the microchipping fee from $12 to $25, is 108%. That's huge. Unfortunately, the county has sort of given us 140% increase in the fee they're charging us, right? So we have to sort of decide, should we try to absorb as much of that as possible? So I was, I thought, you know, what the resident had mentioned about looking at our neighborhood, you know, our neighboring communities. I looked at Merrill, I looked at Appleton, I looked at Cronin Wetter. And one thing I think would be good going forward is maybe to look at our fee structure in general for pets, because I noticed in some of the other municipalities, we break out cats and dogs, which I think might be a good idea. They also have a different fee for puppies or kittens, you know, that are purchased after a certain time, or perhaps can't be neutered or spayed that early in their lives. So why give them a very, you know, huge fee because they can't do it? So I mean, maybe that's something we can work on for next year, right? Is just being able to look at neighboring communities, comparables across the state, to see, you know, how we can maybe better serve our residents, and then really drum up some, give an incentive to license, but to also bolster our fee, right? To bolster that reserves, to finance this humane officer. Because one thing I looked at was like Appleton. And Appleton's fees were really relatively low, like 10, 15 bucks. $10 for a regular dog, 15 for a non-altered. But they don't have a dedicated humane officer. So that puts them in a different perspective altogether. So I would actually, I hope to amend after we get more discussion. But I actually would like to amend it so that our now, our new altered pet fee would be $20 with the $5 microchip deduction, which would be a difference of 25% increase to our residents instead of the 108% that we're proposing. If we did initially, like maybe went to 25 instead of the 30, that would bring it down to 20, but that's 66% increase, which I think 25% is probably a little more manageable. So I guess that's my hope, is maybe we can look at this a little bit into the future and see if there's maybe a different structure we can do for pets, just so that maybe we can try to maximize what we save for our humane officer, but also try to not penalize people who have animals.
Before you make the motion, ask the Finance Director to weigh in?
Oh, I was just going to mention, I think the municipal code dictates how we calculate the fee for puppies. So we already are discounting those based on that ordinance. It doesn't specify that here, but the software is designed to discount for puppies based on our ordinance, yes.
So both the puppies and kittens?
Yes. So I just, again, last year's fee of 20, if we want to, for spade, if we want to recover what the county increased it, it has to be at least $27. For not-spade, if we want to recover the county's, it has to go up to at least 72. So you, you know, if, otherwise you're losing ground on what is available to pay animal enforcement. So there were a lot of numbers. I was losing track of that.
I don't think she actually did it yet in formal.
Okay, so we'll keep, we'll keep taking comment, and you can call that a little bit. Fair? All right, can't see the screen from here.
Sorry.
Okay, we have Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Historically, the Public Health and Safety Committee has done a lot of work on both animal policy and animal licensing. And so prior to our adoption of a uniform fee schedule, a lot of that research and that work was done there. I agree that I think we should take a more holistic look at animal licensing in general. With respect to the 2027 budget, I mean, we are now ready to send out the notices, so it's a little late to do that for 2026. But I certainly can feel people's pain with the increase. We are, this is completely the wrong time. We are economic, the economics are not good right now. We are looking at, based on the federal shutdown, a loss of income for Wisconsin residents, for some local residents. We're looking at what could quickly turn into some kind of hunger crisis if SNAP isn't funded. We're looking at folks who are struggling in many, many, many facets of their daily life. And so if we have to pass along the county's increase, which I think that it was the wrong time for them to do that as well. Obviously, it's outside our control. You know, the city has 11 representatives on that board, and I don't know how they all voted on this, but if they have passed along an increase of $7 and $10, I think at the very least, because we still have, we don't have a humane officer, but we have an animal control program that is staffed by CSOs, who we still have to pay. So I feel like at least if we are looking to recover that funding, that increase, we will have to pass along if we're unwilling to eat that cost as a municipality. But I also think we've had a problem historically with license compliance and license avoidance. Some of that was cost-driven. And when we started our work in that committee, we figured out that about only 10% of the animals that actually existed in the city were actually licensing. That licensing compliance came way up. When we started to network with vet clinics, we started to get rabies vaccine data, we had staff that was following up. The humane officer, when she began, was reaching out to owners, saying, "I see you've vaccinated your pet. Now it's time to license." Over time, that effort waned. But when that effort was in full swing, licensing compliance went way up. But you do have to keep that affordable for folks. I also don't think that we should be reducing the microchip discount. Our goal is to, a good part of the goal of animal licensing is to get the animal back to the owner when it's found. And so a microchip is a better tool even than a dog license to get that to happen. So if people are microchipping their pets, we should not be reducing the amount of discount that they get. So I think as we talk our way through what these fees should be, if that microchip discount was $8, even if the math was difficult, that should stay $8. People have been used to that discount now. I think that's been in place for four or five licensing cycles at least. And you don't want to disincentivize people from purchasing that microchip. And so if they get a small discount, even if it's a couple dollars on that license, that could mean the difference between licensing or not. I do think there does need to be a difference in the fee for altered animals versus unaltered animals. Obviously, controlling the pet population is important. So I think we should focus our discussion on whether or not we pass along the county's increase or not. Because to me, that feels like it's a yes or no. I think the extra few dollars we added for ourselves, yes, we have administrative costs, but I think for us to pile on to what's already been done is even worse than what we've received from over at the county. So that's where I think we should focus our discussion. You know, do we have another area that we can alter to recover any of that loss? And if we don't, are we willing to only pass along what we got from county and not pile on for ourselves? So I would hope we'd focus our, either our amendment or our fee that we set on those things.
Thank you. Alder Neal?
Thank you. Well, it's kind of frustrating that, you know, we're so close to like the need to be mailing notices, and we're having this, you know, very, you know, macro discussion about, you know, what we should and shouldn't be doing. I'm not quite even sure what Alder Rasmussen's recommendation really is when it comes down to the amended proposal. My first blush was I welcomed Alder Watson's proposal and would probably support that. But, you know, in light of timeliness and all that, I mean, what is, what are our options right now? I mean, can we send this back for a more detailed recommendation? Or do we have to act tonight because, you know, the clock's running? So I'm concerned about that, and I would like to be enlightened on it.
Director, go.
Well, this was supposed to be on council on 10/14, but because of the cancellation of the meeting, got delayed. Again, we usually send out notices the...
The week of Thanksgiving typically.
In November. And we have to, you know, get the forms ready, get the changes into the software. So we were just trying to be proactive. If you sent this back to Finance, it would not go to Finance until November 11th. If you, you know, took it back to council the same night, you would be in a similar situation where you wouldn't have a lot of time to discuss it, or...
Or also would go Finance on November 11th, and then council on November 24th, I think it is, that week of Thanksgiving. And then that would delay getting the license renewals out in the mail.
Yeah.
Can I clarify my comment? Because I think that maybe is where some of the confusion is.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. My offer was to take a more holistic look at this in Public Health and Safety before the outset of the 2027 budget in the summer. So I do think we need to look at it differently, and we maybe need to restructure it. But I think at the bare minimum, if you were going to ask me what I thought we should do with this, I don't know that we have a choice about passing along the county's choices or the county's fees, but I do think that we should not add on to that for our own budget as well. And I also think we should not be penalizing people on the microchip fee. So my recommendation, if it was me, I would support, if we were going to amend it, to pass along the county's fees and keep the $8 microchip discount. And then study it further for next year.
Thank you. Neil, you still up? Alder, yes, no?
Well, just to follow up, I mean, now we have, what, two potential amendments, amended proposals in front of us?
Well, we haven't heard of an amendment yet, so right now we have a potential. Go ahead. I'm sorry, we have a motion to amend from what?
Yeah, I would like to amend it, and then I think we're all talking about it, right? Am I going to snap down anybody's discussion? Okay, so I guess my amendment would be to change the spay-and-neuter dog-cat to $22, and the microchip discount back to the $8. Wait, wait. I wanted to go to 15.
So under that situation, the city would be receiving $5 less per license, right?
Unfortunately. I guess I'm saying we're going to eat, we're going to eat it. That's my, so looking at what...
I would not recommend that.
I get that. I don't know if it's 22. 20. It's 14. I guess I would say $23.
A motion to...
Sorry, $23 with an $8 deduction.
I would not recommend that.
So we have a motion to amend $23 with an $8 deduction. Is there a second? Second from McIlhany?
Yes, yes. I think Alder Lukens, I think...
Okay, so we had Alder Lukens in the queue. Alder Lukens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm just kind of confused. Okay, so to change the spay-and-neuter fee to $23, is that the same as passing along the county fee?
No.
Okay, so it would be less than that. Okay, so I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can address this or not, but there is one other item in the agenda. I don't know if it can be, but I don't know if I can speak to that. So, I mean, in the agenda, in the budget, that I'm thinking would be some money, but I don't know if it could, like, to help cover this, but I don't know if I can address that.
I'm not sure. I'm going to say we're not, we're not, we're not making budget amendments tonight?
So then I can't. Okay, so all we can do is...
We're setting the fees for just the pet licenses?
Well, then this kind of stinks because, okay. Well, I guess what I'll say is I do agree. I care a lot about residents that, there are a lot of residents that are faced with so many hardships right now. You know, food, so many things because of the government shutdowns, the, you know, high cost of, you know, rents and the shortage of housing, and enough people who are in these places that also have pets and emotional support animals. And so I too do not think that we should lower the microchip fee, or the microchip credit, I should say. I don't think that should be lowered. I would like us to... What we have to pay for the county, we do, but I would like us to try to figure out something else other than raising our cost. And I see the chief walking up here, so maybe he has something to say. Thank you.
We have a question for the chief, if you're able and willing.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Or a concern, I guess I would say. As we prepared the 2026 budget, I put on the chopping block the CSO 2s that do animal control. control and I'm smart enough to listen to the people that tell me what they think of that, and I heard a resounding, "We want them, we want to maintain them." They did a great job last year. They increased licensing by 1,000 licenses in the city of Wausa in 2025, and they didn't even work a full year. With that being said, the funding mechanism that's in place to fund them for 2026 is the Animal Control Fund and the surplus dollars that are in there that come from licensing. So if the city is going to subsidize the county's increase moving forward, I am concerned that that jeopardizes the ability to continue to fund those positions moving forward. Those might be future budgets, that might be not an issue to deal with today, but part of the conversation we had is how can we utilize our staff to the best of our ability to get as much licensing as possible in this city and all animals licensed in order to fund the employees that do that work into the future? And if in the course of getting those animals licensed, the city of Wausa is subsidizing the county out of that fund, I'm just concerned about what the future looks like for a program that I have stewardship over. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Henke.
Thank you. I had a, I had a thought between finance and now and just did some math. If we increased the microchip discount to $10 and left the rate at $30, that would cover our costs for everyone that has a microchip to the dollar and then it would, we would increase the fee a little bit more for people who don't have their pets microchipped. So that would be just changing the microchip discount up to $10, which would encourage microchipping and still cover all of the costs that have been sent on to us. So regardless of how this amendment goes, I'll probably be making another one. Thank you.
Okay, Alder McElhaney. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped Martins.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think there was a little bit of confusion during the finance committee meeting here while we were trying to work this through the committee and talk this out. And when you start throwing numbers around, I know it gets all jumbled up in my head. And I think between then and now, I do feel a little bit more clarity. And I know, it's kind, you know, it is kind of a raw deal that the county has increased, you know, their, their amount that they're requesting from $5, you know, from $5 up to $12, a $7 increase. And we can't, you know, the city cannot subsidize what the, you know, just like the chief said, the city can't subsidize what the county is requesting as part of the animal license just for the reason that we, you know, in our proposed budget for 2026, we're using the reserves, the surplus from animal control in order to fund the CSOs. And if we start, and if we start subsidizing the county, those reserves are going to be depleted faster and, you know, it's going to decimate the animal control program. So I cannot, I can't support any amendment where the spayed and neutered licensing fee is anything below $27. I can support increasing the microchip discount to $8 or even $10. I think that would be a great idea. Microchipping is important and that would be an excellent incentive to help, you know, help with lost or stray animals. And I think we should do nothing with the non-spayed and neutered or the unaltered animal fee. Let's leave that at $75.
Okay, so we're still on the amendment. Alder McElhaney.
Thank you. I started this, I voted against it in finance, I think it was finance or finance budget, one of those, and I continued to do that. I will support the amendment up from Alder Watson. I will not support going above that. We, you know, I can't control the county, but I can control my vote here. We cannot keep nickeling and diming people to death in this city. And I know that we look at different pots of money and it's all one pot of money for the residents. It's what we're going to talk about later. It's tid money is different pot and this is different pot. They have one pot and it's getting less and less and less for things they need. I have got, I have received calls that people are saying, "I'm not going to, I'm not going to be able to license my animals. Are you going to take them away?" I can't, I mean, I can't support this. I get where we are. I understand the county's thing, but just saying, I'm not going to shrug my shoulders and say, "Oh, well, it is what it is." Because we are going to go backwards in licensing again, just like we were in 2014. People weren't licensing, people weren't microchipping. So we keep this wrong-headed approach. We have to find a way to understand our residents, you know, just where they're at. They, we have people that, look at the food pantries. I mean, it's different things, but it's like everything is, and this little fee that we probably all think we can write a check for, many people are struggling and worrying about that we're going to take their pets away because they can't afford that and they don't know what's going to happen. So I will support Alder Watson's amendment, but anything else, I probably will not. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Lukens, and we're still on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, I would just like to, I'm still processing in my head Alder Henke's, what he brought up. So it would be $20, no, 30? I don't know. I don't know. So can I request that Alder Henke repeats what he was talking about? Thank you.
Alder Henke, you know, I guess we will get to that depending on which way this vote goes. If you want to telegraph it, go ahead.
I redid the math, thank you. I redid the math. It would be moving the microdiscount to $11. It's not this amendment, but that's just a thought I had because that would, that would put the, that would cover us for the increase on microchipped pets to the dollar. And then it would increase, we would get, the city would get extra on non-microchipped animals.
Okay, any further comments on the amendment of 20...
23, to change the spade and neuter fee to $23 and reverse the microchip discount back to $8.
I have one more speaker. Mr. Greiner.
Thank you, Mayor. So the county raised the pet licensing fees in a larger effort to address, how would you say, budget shortfalls, the operation of the licenses and the application and the delivery, the software, the labor. The county was in the red on the, well, in distributing these outs, which is why it was part of a larger effort by the county to try to recoup some of the losses that we had been getting at that point. If we were to raise this to the 23 or the 27, would that still put us in the black for this? Or would that still be shouldering too much of a burden on the city for that?
Director Groh.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, so we've been relying on property taxes. So the Animal Control Fund was relying on property taxes to balance all of our costs for animal control. So we eliminated the levy for the year 2026 and reduced the staffing. Finance committee in their budget deliberations increased the staffing and funded the difference out of reserves that had accumulated in the Animal Control Fund. So we're already, I guess, living on borrowed time in the Animal Control Fund as we deplete those minimal reserves that are there already. So if all of a sudden now we're reducing what we can allocate to the fund for operations each year, I would say that would be a step backwards if we want to remain committed to animal control and we want to fund it out of fees. So as I mentioned, you know, the minimum to recover the county's costs, the fee would need to go for spade neutered from 20 to 27 and for not spayed from 62 to 72. And then we're just recovering the county's lift.
Staying with the amendment now, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Just a question on revenue, because my understanding of the Animal Control Fund was that the two fund sources that go into the Animal Control Fund to fund animal control, whether we had a humane officer or not, was pet license fees and animal fine revenue, right? So when there's citations...
Property tax levy.
Okay, but this year they're removing the levy, right?
Right.
So they're trying to rely on the license fees and the fine income, which is variable because you don't know how many fines you're going to issue, right? So...
And now we're balancing the cost with reserves.
With reserve. So the break-even point on the license fee, if I heard you right, was 27, 72, right? 27 altered, 72 not, right?
Yes, yes.
That's your break-even point to just not eat the county's numbers.
Correct.
Okay. And then that was notwithstanding whatever we set the microchip at, right?
Right. I mean, if you increase the discount, obviously, we're still depleting our collections because we're...
But on your break-even calculation, was that with an $8 microchip that we had before?
Yes.
It was? Okay. Because there, there you're not going backwards on the microchip. I think at the very least, we have got to, I think we need to dispense with the amendment that's in front of us, but I don't feel like we can go forward below that right now. We do need to study it more for 27, but for 26, if our break-even point to just pass along the county's addition and not penalize the microchip owners, 27, 72, and 8 were those numbers that I heard from Mary Ann, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That gives me clarity on the amendment.
Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that we did hear was that there was an increase in animal license of, well, we have 1,000 licenses now.
1,000 more?
Right, 1,000 additional. If we can, you know, if we're increasing the cost for people to do the right thing, spade and neuter, microchip, if we're not giving them the discounts and we're continuing to raise the costs, you're not going to see those types of numbers in animal licensing because people are going to, at some point, say, "I can't do this. I just can't do this. So I'm not going to license my animals and we're not going to keep making ground in additional licenses." We're going to go backwards because we're making it more and more expensive for people to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Watson.
Thank you. So with the numbers that Mary Ann gave, 27 and 72, we already have the not spayed, not neutered dog at 75, so that's $3 higher than we would need.
Yes.
Regardless. So like lowering it from 27 to 23 would only be like a negative 1 if you're looking at... I mean, I guess it's hard to say too overall, like, how many licenses are unaltered, how many licenses are altered, you know? Because 27 minus 23, I'm doing, that's 4, but then we have an extra 3 go into the unaltered one because that's 75. So that's just a negative, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But I guess, I guess the thing though would...
I think the majority of pets are...
Altered, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, but to better get numbers and guesstimates, we probably need the both. But the positive is, you know, we still went up on the 72, so, thanks.
Alder Larson. Alder Larson calls the question. Is, do we need a second? I don't see anyone else speaking. Do we need a second on that? So we have a call, the question from Larson, any second. Second from Martins. And under the rules, we will vote on this and anyone that was in, who is still in the queue could speak. I see none in the queue, but we'll take the vote to call the question. Terminate discussion on the amendment.
Can we vote on the call?
Yes, motion from Larson, second from Martins.
May we begin voting on calling the question? I'm voting on calling the question.
No.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
So we are ready to vote on the amendment? And let's read that again.
Motion to amend to change the spade and neuter fee to $23 and reverse the microchip discount back to $8. You may, you may begin voting. Motion passes 6 to 5.
Okay, with an amended motion, we're back to the main motion, right?
As amended, yeah.
As amended.
This was the previous speaker queue? I'm going to remove you unless you would like to speak.
So the motion as amended. Do we need to clarify that again? Do we have it?
So it would be off, sorry. It would be to authorize the modification of fees to the city of Wausa fees and license schedule with the spade and neuter fee at $23 and reverting the microchip discount back to $8.
Okay, so we had an original motion from Watson, second from Lukens. Alder Henke.
Thank you. I'll try and articulate this better. So the county raised our fee on spade and neutered by $7. Currently, somebody is paying $12. If we increase the rate to $30 and the microchip discount to $11, their fee would go up, the $7 that the county charged us. Anyone who isn't spayed and neutered would go up an additional $3, which would be above and beyond what the county is raising ours. And then the non-spayed and neutered would still go up above what the county raised us. So I would like to make the amendment to make the 2026 rate $30 for spayed and neutered dogs or cats, the microchip discount of $11, and the not spayed, neutered dog or cat at 75.
All right, so we have a motion.
I'll second Chad's amendment.
We have another motion to amend. And we'll wait for the clerk to get it teed up here and we would...
I got it, I have to...
Motion from Henke is, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Rasmussen. Is it as intended?
Motion to amend to increase the spade and neuter fee to $30, increase the microchip discount to $11, and increase the non-spayed and neutered fee to $75.
I mean, I mean, that 75 is what it is already, but...
That's what it is. So, okay, to keep, okay. So, okay, to keep, okay.
Yes.
To... Okay, so then, and to keep the non-spayed and neutered fee at $75.
Okay, so with a motion and a second. Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a question. Would that $11 credit for the microchip, the discount, be for both? Spay and neuter and unspayed and neuter? That would be, okay. So then, well, I actually, do you have another question for then the finance director? Because, so I can't vote to approve the other amendment, or the, what now is our original motion, if we can't, like, we can't do that, right? I mean, we can't. That could risk the program, if I'm understanding that correctly, if we go with the 23. So, would this, would this work, finance? Do you, do you know?
Director Grob.
Well, I like it better than the First Amendment. I mean, again, just like the county, we're trying to recover our costs and...
Does that be closer?
Oh, did they get less sensitive or something? I'm a loudmouth. I don't know. But anyhow, we want to recover our costs to run the program. As we all know, we are struggling to cover costs for the services that the residents rely on. This is a program that we've been trying to recover costs. I mean, when it was set up, when the, when the fee structure was set up, it was designed to drive people to spay and neuter their dogs, because you end up with fewer strays, thank you, and to encourage the microchipping so that we could find dogs when they were lost, so they wouldn't end up at the Humane Society in a, in a adoption situation. So I think the original funding was designed well. Again, we're just trying to recover additional costs, because our costs go up every year for contracts, for staffing, and we don't, like I said, even allocate our license maintenance costs to the program. Those are all being accounted for in the clerk's budget. So this is really just law enforcement activities and our obligations to the Humane Society and any other, like, overhead costs, like the actual little tags that we issue. So I guess I like that better. And we can certainly put something in with the renewals that say the county's costs went up, and we have to pass that on to the residents. We could, we could add that into our information.
I, I think I would be definitely for that. I think that would be good for residents to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Henke.
Thank you. Just one more thought on this. I mean, it, it also really incentivizes microchipping your animal. I mean, that's a 33% discount, you know, on, on microchipping your animals, so just another reason why I thought this was a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Tierney.
Call the question.
The question has been called. Is there a second? And you may begin voting.
You may begin voting on calling the question. Motion passes 10 to 1.
Okay, so there's no more discussion on that. The main motion, actually, the, the amendment is what we're voting on.
This is a, this is Alder Henke's motion to amend to increase the spay and neuter, sorry, let me correct this, to increase the spay and neuter fee to $30, increase the micro discount to $11, and keep the non-spayed and neutered fee at $75. You may begin voting on the amendment. Alder Greiner? Motion fails 4 to 7.
All right, so we're back to our amended, previously amended, and please read that, and we're going to vote on that.
Okay, so as, as amended, it would be this item and changing the spay and neuter fee to $23 and reverting the microchip discount to $8.
Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what happens if this doesn't pass?
Well, then it's...
Because, I mean, if we can't do this financially, I'm not voting in favor of it. I mean, right? Because we'd be losing money, is that, that's what I've heard. And it could risk the program, correct?
Right.
I, I want it to be affordable for residents, but we need a program, right? So what happens if this doesn't pass? I guess is what I'm...
So there'd be no change to the fee structure?
So we would eat the county costs?
And then we're going to eat, we're going to subsidize the county?
Correct. Alder Watson.
I guess, like, okay, I understand that this amendment may not have been that fiscally woo-hoo, right? Because we aren't recouping those costs. But we also are here for those residents, and our, our animal control fund has $140,000 in it. We're reallocating about, what we're proposing to reallocate about 60, so that'll leave about 80. Plus, if we continue to get the robust licensing this year and the enforcement by our police officers that we're, you know, we're funding, I mean, that's going to keep going up. Now, granted, expenses are going to be higher, I get that, but then maybe we can pivot next year and come up with a better fee schedule that maybe does a little bit, I don't know, different or something. I don't know. So we're not going to, like, torpedo the program this, this year. At least, that's my opinion. So I, I would really just like to, like, help our residents a little bit. Yeah, we have to eat this cost this year, but we can really think about it over the next year. So, thanks.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. The only way the gap gets filled, that gets created here, is by then increasing licensing compliance, which, my understanding was that residents have until, is it March 31st, to license at the standard rate? And then as of April 1st, they are late, right? So that fee goes up tremendously, April 1st, for the pet owner?
It's just $5.
Oh, it's just $5, okay. Because at one point, we had a penalty fee that was very, very large, come April 1st, so that's, now that's back to $5?
So the, the state statute does not allow us to impose a fine greater than $5.
Okay, so, but then, the only way to make up that gap, then, is to increase compliance. So then, we will have to, like the chief said, that partial year ramped up licensing compliance by 1,000 new licenses. They're going to have to go out in January, at least in that first quarter, while we're still in that compliance window, and, and get a bunch more. And, and focus their effort during those winter months on making sure that everybody who should be licensing has licensed. So that also, I mean, the optics of that, probably people are going to also feel that we've not done them any favors with that. But, you know, there's, the program can't operate, if the program operates at a loss year on, year on, year, it's going to start to look like a small version of the motor pool. That, that's where, I mean, like, everyone was concerned when the media covered the motor pool and the deficits that exist there, because the equipment is underperform, the charging isn't enough to cover the cost of the equipment. This is the same theory. We are, we are operating at a loss here with the way this amended rate is. So the only way to make up that gap is to make sure that new licenses...
During discussion of the amendment, I wouldn't support anything about, or below the $27 floor, but, dollar floor, but I, I feel that I have to support this, this, this fee schedule as amended, because 23, collecting 23 is better than collecting 20 if the, if, if the schedule fails. I feel like the, the furniture salesman, you know, that we're selling, we're selling these mattresses at a loss, but we're going to make it up on volume. I don't know. The numbers, the numbers don't pencil for me, but it's, I guess it is what it is, and hopefully, hopefully, compliance will increase so that we can, we can at least maintain our animal control program. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Tierney.
Call the question.
Tierney calls the question. Is there a second? Okay, the question has been called, we'll vote on that. There are three in the queue if we get to that, or two, or two or three, I forgot. Okay, one, we'll see.
You may begin voting on calling the question. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay, show on Alder Lukens.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. All I wanted to say, then, is the same. I mean, my, I, my greatest concern is for the residents, and I, so I want them to be able to afford this. I said I would not vote in favor of this. I will vote in favor of this. Alder Watson, thank you for explaining before, but I am concerned about the animal control program. We do need that, because we do need that for residents as well. So I just wanted to state that publicly, that, you know, my greatest concern is for residents and then them being able to afford this, so I will vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think we're ready to vote. Do you, does anyone need it rewritten again? Are we clear?
As amended.
As amended.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 9 to 2. As amended.
Okay, so just as a reminder, we do have a significant chunk of items left here, so how's everyone doing on the, we ready to go? Keep her going? Let me know if you need a break. All right, suspension of the rules, we have up next, item 11, suspension, to suspend Rule 12A for referral of resolutions, or 6B for filing. We don't break down which is which here. Would entertain a motion. We have a motion from Watson, second from Rasmussen. Or is it two-thirds vote?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 9 to 2.
First up is, under suspension of the rules, is File 25-1010, Resolution from Common Council Approving, approving of and participating in the Purdue Direct Opioid Settlement. Motion from Rasmussen, second from Martins. Comments on that? Do we need any explanation? Seeing none.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Up next is File 25-1012, it's a resolution from the Common Council approving WisFot Election Services Memorandum of Understanding with Marathon County. Motion from Lukens, second from Henke. Seeing no questions.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Up next is File number 25, is this what we have Mr. Dahl online for? Okay. 25-1011, Resolution from the Common Council approving term sheet for redevelopment of Riverside Place, known as 11 Scott Street, by 11 Scott Street LLC. And we have a motion from Lukens, second from Rasmussen. We do have our Economic Development Manager, Mr. Geterman, here, and we can refer to him if you want to, you want to tee up some of the, why don't you do that? Because we heard a lot of comments, and we're going to reset our computer here.
Yeah, and we have Keith Dahl online from Aylers for any questions as well. So first, I want to introduce myself, because I'm not sure everyone here knows me. I'd say raise your hand if you do, and don't if you don't. So I'm Patrick Geterman, I'm the new Economic Development Manager for the City of Wassa, expertise in small business and development. So what I want to kind of hit on is what's in your packet in regards to 11 Scott. The first usually thing we talk about when we have developers come through for TID financing is a development agreement, correct? Used to see in those. And here, you're actually seeing a term sheet, which is the difference, because what is not really explained in a lot of the testimony is the, a lot of negotiation that has gone into this. So if you read kind of the memo that I put together regarding how we started here, it was actually two years ago when this process started. So it's really been a great job between Aylers, developer, city staff, the mayor, thank you, of trying to get to this point. So this is a lot of negotiation, a lot of back and forth. So the reason it wasn't a development agreement was, you know, we have to have cost as an attorney, and we want to make sure we were good on terms before we brought to that point. So that's kind of start off with. So it started, you know, 2024, the big thing that you've heard of testimony is, this is the missing middle. They're referencing both a 2020 project actually done by North Central Regional Planning Commission, stating like, this range of rents they have hits, and in their rents, it's between 16, 70% of AMI. AMI ultimately, ultimately is area median income, which is, you can see on the one HUD sheet we have in your packet. In addition to that, we've heard a lot, things about testimony of the parking ramp. The parking ramp, of course, is a huge liability. I know it's the garage mahal, and I love that term, I might still call it that, but, you know, this year, there's a $600,000 expense we have into that. Every year, the city puts in $100,000 plus into at least one ramp. It's, they average 300,000 every third year, so you can average that out. This releases a lot of liability. In addition, we get payment out, which we have in the past. It's an underutilized ramp. So some really good points that they've made in here. I would entertain any questions, but at this point in time, our next step would be continuing on to a development agreement.
Thank you.
You bet.
Why don't you stand by, we'll maybe get some questions here. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Lot of good comment on this project tonight, and I think that it should not be lost on us. When we talk about TID incentives, that is a very complex subject that often takes us multiple terms to absorb and learn to understand the calculations and the law that go into tax increment financing. But what that means at the end of the day is that the incentive does not come from the taxes paid by every resident in town. It comes from revenue generated within the tax increment district itself. And so that district is reinvesting into itself to cover those incentives. The analysis indicates that that district has the capacity to assist with this project. So the message that I get from my residents repeatedly is, find a way to stimulate growth, get Wassa growing again. You know, we have struggled with growth and development projects. The, the number one way to find rate stabilization in taxes is growth. And in terms of growth, we need to grow Wassa bigger. We need more taxpayers paying into that pot. If that building at 11 Scott Street sits empty and its value drops, its share of the pot is not what it once was, and there again, the redistribution of taxes goes back to everyone. We don't, we don't go forward by regressing on the taxes that we collect on 11 Scott Street. The other thing I think we need to think about is, we need an active, vibrant business center, or a active, vibrant... or a active vibrant downtown. When that building was first built and you would go by, like now you go by at four, five o'clock, it's dark out. You would see lights on in the windows. People were working in their offices. That building was lit up. It was an active space. If you go by there now, it's not. It's dark and it's dark every day and it's dark every night. Nothing's happening in that building. What a waste. And so imagine that if we partner with the private sector, we convert that into apartments, we get people living there that need that middle rent tier. And you go by there at night and the lights are on again. People are living there. And the chamber director's comments about COVID were spot on. With the rise of work from home, which really resulted from COVID, the need for office space and the desire for people to spend 40 hours of their week tied to their office is gone. And so at one point to have our vibrant downtown, we needed all kinds of people coming into the downtown and working all day long, and then they'd go home at night. Now it's the opposite. We need people living in our downtown so that they are spending that income for those necessities in that area. And so if they work from home and they happen to live downtown, that commerce is still happening in your downtown district. You're not going to have that void anymore. So we need those spaces to be active and not empty. I do think that the developer in question has a proven track record. We've seen what they build. They're from here. We worked with them on the projects along 17th Avenue. They've got that, they've got that proof that's already there for us. So, you know, this is not us working with a partner we don't know, with a partner that has no positive history in our city. And so I feel like to get that growth stimulated, to create those housing units that we need in that middle tier, the reason the missing middle is so important, which we learned in our economic development discussions, is that when that middle is missing, people who could afford more, when the, when the top tier is missing, people who can afford more occupy the middle. When the lower tier is missing, people that need that lower tier are stretched by having to be stuck in that middle. Right now, we're missing the middle. We've built in the high end, we've built in the lower end. But now that middle, there's not enough of those units. And so we need to create in that market. Our housing study basically showed us that we were short on units in every single price point. So we've addressed the high end. We've addressed the affordable end. We've really addressed the affordable end with the openings that we see happening. Now it's time for us to address that middle. I really think it's important that we have the courage to do that. When you look at the metrics of this project, they started over $3 million with their ask. That ask has been pared down to 750. And the other important caveat that I noted in our packet was that part of that term sheet was that that developer has committed to not challenge the finished assessment of that building. And so think about that when you're not in tax litigation with someone you've incentivized. We've had that happen to us before on projects we've worked on. In fact, we had it almost annually when the mall was up. Everyone loved the mall. I can remember being sued by Yonkers and Sears every year. So, you know, we need, we really need, I think, to partner on this project and really get something put together where the lights are on in that building again and that it's an active space that's getting used. And that building sitting dark every night is, is not what's good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we heard a tremendous amount in public comment from Mr. Craig and Mr. Lockery and all of his supporters about the wonderful amenities that this would bring to our downtown. And yes, it might bring that to our downtown. I'm very familiar with Mr. Lockery's success as a developer and would support him in anything as a developer. But one thing we're not hearing, and we heard it very succinctly from Alder Rasmussen and Alder Lukens when we were talking about raising animal fees, okay? Our residents are suffering. They can't afford to increase their license fees. Our residents can't afford their water bills. Our residents are struggling. When I came into office, it was told to us very distinctly, we as alderpeople need to focus on what we need in this city, not what we want. And yes, I really would want to see that building vibrant and the lights on. But more importantly than that, I want to see the lights on in my residents' homes. I want to see food on their table and I want to see them be able to pay their mortgages and not live out of cars. I said at a previous meeting that I was not going to support any more subsidies for high-end development. I'm not going to do that. Our city needs to start focusing on what we can do to improve the economy for our residents. I'm not disputing the need for that building downtown. I'm not disputing the fact that it would be a wonderful thing and would make our downtown more vibrant. But we have about 95% of the other residents in this city to think about. And I hate seeing our focus in one direction on high-end development. And yes, we have affordable housing projects going up on Thomas and on Stewart and First Avenue. But guess what? Our residents are telling us we can't afford them. They may be called affordable housing, but we can't afford them. And maybe this middle income network, or this middle whatever that we're trying to cover is realistic. Maybe we don't have apartments in that middle level. But you know what? If they can't afford apartments in the lower level and certainly not in the upper level, we need to start thinking about 95% of our residents in the city and how so many people are suffering. So I will not support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to say welcome to Alder Greiner. Congratulations. And going back to the question, a lot has been said, thank you, Alder Killian. This was brought up at our neighborhood meeting last night and, and you know what I got out of it? A huge resounding no. People are tired of subsidizing our downtown when they can't pay their taxes on their own house. People are tired of subsidizing multimillion dollar developers. It's just, like I read one comment in the, in the newspaper, go, go get a bank loan like everybody else. I mean, we, we need to stop. I'd love to see this building, the lights on in the building, but, but let, let, let the, let the developers figure it out. I mean, they bought the property. Let them figure it out. I wouldn't be able to go home to my house. I wouldn't be able to go home to my district if I supported this after what I heard last night. Thank you.
Alder Martins?
Thank you. I'm going to support this development because, for a few reasons. Because number one, it hits all of the buttons. This is, well, it's, it's a vacant building. And honestly, commercial space is, we've got a glut of commercial space and those commercial rents are not going to come back to downtown Wausau. And if you want, if, if you want a vibrant downtown district, you're going to need one of two things to happen. Number one, people have got to work downtown, or number two, people need to live downtown. And if we don't have the people working downtown, we got to attract people to live downtown because that's where the, that's where the economic growth is going to happen. And if the downtown, you know, if, if the downtown district goes, if the downtown district fails, so goes the rest of the city. It's, it's our economic engine and we have to, we have to realize that and we have to understand that. The, the ask, I think, you know, for what they're, for what they're doing, the ask is very reasonable. There's been a lot of work going on over, over the course of several years to refine the, 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 the terms of, of this, of this, of this project so that it's, it's, it's reasonable. $750,000, I think, is, is very reasonable. And what it does is it keeps the rents for these units at or below 70% of the adjusted bean income, which means, well, you can think of it as, as, as a subsidy, really. It keeps those rents, those units at a price point that's currently not available in the city. Not in, not at our, at our low end, which is subsidized, not at the high end, which is market rate, but just somewhere, you know, it's, yeah, for, for, you know, any, any other, any other, loss of any other term that, you know, that, that midpoint, and that's very important. Since day one of being an alder, I've always said, I need, we need to support housing at all levels and I'm going to support housing at all levels and that means supporting this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Alder Lukens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I also will be supporting this and I, so, you know, halfway into, more than halfway, my second term. Like I'm finally starting to really understand some things. With economic development, there's a lot to learn. And when I, like, when I first was, you know, on, on, when I was first on council, I did not understand how that all worked. In order, it's as Alder Martin said, as Alder Rasmussen said, in order to be a thriving municipality, we need to have a thriving downtown. And, you know, I think, again, I read those comments also in the newspaper. The problem is, one, and I'm just going to call this out. A lot of people who are commenting on social media on those articles don't even live here. I personally know of some of these people who are regularly commenting, they're naysayers. They don't even live here or anywhere close. Two, they do not understand, and again, halfway into my second term, I'm still trying to understand fully TID and TIF. What I have learned is, as Alder Rasmussen said, funding doesn't come straight from the taxpayers. That's not how it works. So I see people saying that all the time. It comes from the revenues raised by that district. Now, I agree, we have lots of residents who are struggling. Yeah. I know personally many, many residents who are struggling. The thing is though, the revenue that is going to be raised by having people live in these apartments, having people downtown, that all is going to add to the pot to be able to help the other residents that some of you are concerned about, that I'm concerned about, that we're all concerned about, every single one of us. But we can't just have, like, no development and us, look at, look at the, the, how much time we spent on licenses, on pet licensing. If we want to thrive, we have to also invest in economic development. And I'm with the rest of you. I don't want to have to pour any money into it. But again, the way this is set up, it's a forgivable loan. Now, Mr. Rowe was one of the public commenters. He's an attorney. And the, the people that would be renting these apartments, I'm guessing, are, as he mentioned, young attorneys, paralegals. It's those people. And again, we have to look at, we have to look at the younger generations because they do want to have that downtown, okay? They're, some of them are going to be the people, I'm guessing, living downtown. They're going to be professionals. I go to other communities and there's lots going on downtown. We've lost, when we lost the mall, we lost a lot of businesses, stores, to remote, to other places. And I hear people all the time saying, well, what, you know, where, where are our stores? I've seen it. I've been downtown on a Friday and some places, maybe I want to go to our coast at five o'clock and I'm like, what? Or, you know, not open both days on the weekend. We need that. So the more people that we have living downtown, that will generate more businesses. Okay? And our central business district is really our largest tax base. So we do need this, that in, in my own, and we're not talking about high level. This is middle. I know the rents are, are, are more. My own daughter has been, she's, she's in Weston. The, it's, yeah, the rents are crazy. She's really struggled herself. So, but, but, but that's where we're at throughout the country right now. So I guess, you know, another plus, we have a local developer. So, you know, we've had this conversation many, many times. And I'm just going to say if we don't invest in our downtown, we are not going to have a city to help out all of the people. So if we want it, we have to be willing to add housing, all, all housing. So anyway, I will be voting for this. I would love to have developers, yes, just be able to just develop without any kind of input from us, without any kind of ask. But I've been doing my research. I think all of you know I like to research. And that's the way it is, unfortunately. So I do want a thriving downtown. And I will say there are a lot of professionals living downtown. And if law firms want to grow, if other professional businesses want to grow, they need, they need places for people to live. And those are the types of people that will be renting these apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that ask went down to $750,000 because that was what was recommended by Aylers, if I'm not mistaken. And also, when the foundry was built, this is what we were told, that we need a place for young professionals to live that are close to work. Places where the law firms, such as Ruder, would have their incoming lawyers, paralegals, et cetera. That was the whole sell for the foundry, was to have young professionals come in that would live downtown and make it more vibrant. We have apartments going up downtown. We have 700 grand, which, well, it's not right downtown, but we have Stewart and First. We're going to have the MBX that we just purchased. We have Riverlife, which is going to have another building down, that is down there. We have plans for living space all around the downtown area. As far as people that are speaking against it that don't live in Wausau, we have people speaking for it that don't live in Wausau and that will happen here tonight. I keep hearing that we need this downtown to have a strong downtown. Appleton is growing. I walked downtown Appleton this weekend. I walked up and down downtown Appleton and there is not one apartment building going up in downtown Appleton. And that's an area that's growing, that's vibrant. They're putting shops and businesses downtown to make it vibrant, not apartment buildings. I have heard from so many people, you go out on those neighborhood apps, you talk to people, you look at newspapers, they are saying no. They are continually telling us no when it comes to spending money, unforgivable loans. I mean, you're saying that, and we're constantly saying that this is going to be an influx of revenue for the city. I don't see anybody saying that it's going to reduce the property taxes for these people though. So what's going to happen with that influx of revenue? Is it going to make life easier for people, lower property taxes? I don't think it will. I cannot support this. Thank you.
Oh, did you have something on the?
Oh, did you have something on the commercial space?
Yeah, I can certainly talk on, I mean, a couple items I want to touch on, if that's okay. So some things that I think would help, some clarity also, is, you know, the forgivable loan is based upon offering those rents for seven years. So this is a longer-term investment, so it's, they're holding those, and right now, they're sitting below seventy percent, which is a very positive part of this whole project, is the one. Other things is we are implementing a cost lookback on this. So he's proposing a $10 million total project, $8 million residential side. If the costs come in lower than eight million, the 750,000 actually gets reduced based upon that. So there's a very good benefits tied to construction cost and what he put forward. The actual, the commercial space is, you know, if you look at the residential side, the bottom two parts are our commercial side. The commercial itself is something that is a challenge, of course, to get people in it. I know we have, the foundry has commercial space. We recognize that with our negotiations, that that's why we tied this to the residential side, because to get people, to get the workforce of commercial businesses here, we need to provide housing for that commercial workforce. Colby and Colby has done that. That's why they built that, is they recognize, in order to grow and have people work there, they need to build their own housing. It's what we have to do. And we have to do a similar, with us, is hit that, you know, the reason we call it the missing middle ultimately is because if the higher rents aren't available, they buy that, you know, so you kind of, you take away from another side. So this is, that's why this project has really taken so long to develop, is there's a lot of nuances that are very unique to this construction part of it.
Thank you. Mr. Neal.
Thank you. Well, it's like, here we are back again, having this discussion, which I've had going on ten years on council, on the question of economic development partnerships with developers, TIF financing, over and over and over again. Alder Rasmussen has heard way more than me over her years. Very refreshing to hear Alder Lukens tonight, pretty much saying the kind of things I said for going on, you know, ten years in ED. This project we're talking about is pretty much what you see in economic development partnerships, not just here, but pretty much everywhere. It's one of the few tools we have left to, you know, carve out our own destiny. We cannot sit around waiting for people to fly into town with unlimited funds and just build things without public partnerships. It just doesn't happen. That's the reality. It's also well-known that, and we've talked about it time and time again, that the center of your city, your downtown, is the heart of your community. When it dies, your community dies. You can't just let it go. Metrics studies show the need for downtown residents. It's just a fact. With the leaving of offices, that's just the one thing you've got left. I'm sorry, but buildings, stores, and cafes, that's a, that's a real gamble if you don't have people living there, and expecting it to be a destination for travelers. I appreciate Mr. Lockery's efforts on a variety of fronts as a local developer. You know, right now, we're not even talking about things he's doing downtown after having acquired the Washington Square and adjacent properties, adding apartment enhancements or apartments, exterior enhancements, you know, work that needs to be done, he's not asking for any help. This is because downtown needs investment. It has to be built up. It has to be helped. And I'll tell you one thing, you go downtown and ask any shop owner, any pub owner, any restaurant owner, anybody with a business down there that's relying on traffic, what they think of the foundry coming, and Levin Scott potentially coming, and they're going to say, please, please, make it happen, because my livelihood as a shopkeeper, pub owner, restaurateur relies on that. It's tough. It's really hard. And that is the way you make it happen, is make a downtown area a place where people live, not just visit, not just work and go home, but where they live, where they mill about, you know, where they walk out of their door, and two minutes later, they're in a downtown grocery, or they're in a restaurant, or they're having a cocktail with friends. Pushing that kind of development downtown is vital if we want to progress as a city. I fully support this, and I'm really thankful to Mr. Lockery, Mark Craig, for helping, and appreciate the comments I've heard from the people that came up to the dais tonight, a whole lot of compelling talk, and I appreciate too, a lot of the things I've heard here from council. So certainly supporting this, and I'm happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Greiner.
So, well, thank you, Mayor. So please pardon my ignorance on this for being the new guy, but I have a question relating to this. So if this agreement is approved and sent through the board, or through the council, for $750,000 over the seven years to provide these reduced-cost apartments, has there been anything proposed or anything asked, like, what will happen after this seven years? Has there anything been done that would address the possibility that maybe these would just have the prices raised, and then we're back at square one with no middle-of-the-run housing for middle-income people?
We do have Mr. Dahl from Ellers on the line, and he may have an answer to that, or is that something you want to take, Patrick? I think the analysis that he did...
Yeah, we can recognize Keith, and he can kind of hit on a couple items on that, too.
Okay.
Keith, do you want to?
He's on mute.
Oh, still.
There you go.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. My name's Keith Dahl, I'm a simple advisor at Ellers, and we're the city's financial consultants. We helped in the public assistance underwriting, in the developer negotiations, specifically regarding Levin Scott Street here. As far as the question that was asked, as far as what will happen with the rents in seven years, unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball. Right now, the developer is proposing rents at sixty percent of the area median income, but with the forgivable loan that we are proposing to provide to the developer, it would guarantee that those rents stay below seventy percent of the area median income for seven years. Generally speaking, when a property gets out to ten, fifteen years, it starts becoming what a lot of people in the industry call NOAA, naturally occurring affordable housing. It's not the shiny new product on the block anymore, so it's not necessarily going to go to the highest rent. It's not so for certain that they're not going to increase the rents at a time. Certainly, HOD, which annually publishes the rent maximums, essentially, there has been increases to those over the last several years. We see rent increases within the market as well, on market rate rents. But where the affordability level will be at seven, eight, nine, 10 years from now, we can't say for certain, unfortunately.
And the only thing I would add to that is that is kind of, that was part of the, you know, negotiations, is because we can't determine past that seven-year mark, is why what was drastically reduced down to that $750,000. So it's kind of the reason for that unknown.
Answer your question.
I did, thank you.
Right, Alder Killian.
Just one point I'd like to raise, is I've heard that this is our economic development plan, I've been supporting it for the last 10 years, this is what we need to keep doing. Why, then, is our city in such tough shape financially? If this is, this has been the thrust of our economic development department for many, many years. It has been subsidizing developers for high-end and nice housing. I don't see that our economic situation in Wausau has improved tremendously with that. I'm not an economist, I can only talk from my heart and what I see with the people in our city. I do not see that this economic thrust for high-end development has improved the condition, the financial condition of our city. So to keep hearing that, I question it. I don't think that, I think, I think our economy would be dependent on, as Patrick said, we need to have, yeah, we need to have spaces when industry brings people in, but guess what? There's no economic thrust in this city to bring in industry that's paying living wages for the people who need them. We need to start looking at other options for our economic growth, and I don't think continuing to do this is, is the way to go. You know, they said that initially they asked 1.8 million, but now they're down to $750,000. Well, that's like, like saying to somebody, I know you don't need this, and I normally would ask $50 for it, but if you'll buy it even though you don't need it, I'll sell it to you for 10. And that seems like the same kind of philosophy that we're getting from the developers and this project. So I don't feel that this plan of economic development is really helping the growth in our city. Thank you.
Alder Rasmussen, thank you.
Thank you. I think just one last comment. As we look at the progression of the negotiations on this project, which Alder Killian started to talk about, you know, when they first conceived of the project, they had, you know, thought of numbers like three million, then 1.8 million, then that number a few months ago. As the pro forma calculations and the costs of the project and the parameters of the project came together, that ask, when it was headed for committee a month or so ago, was looking like maybe 950,000. And so, and, and the number we have in front of us today is 750,000. And I believe the way they got there was, when they do the pro forma analysis, when the developer is negotiating with our development team, our staff, and the mayor for that matter, all of them are in these negotiations together, working to get the best possible project at the best price with the appropriate taxpayer protections. That's what we want to see out of these term sheets. And so even as recently as a, as a month or two ago, this project was looking like it was going to be, the ask was going to be more like 950,000. And our team, and, and even the mayor, as, as, as a group, working through those negotiations with the developer, they have some really good business acumen as far as getting that deal to a point where there's balance. There's balance in what the ask is of us, and there's balance in the return on the investment, to make sure that that return happens appropriately, that it happens fast enough, that it's not out there for 25 years, you know, and all of these things. And I think that, the culmination of all of their efforts, sitting together and working with that developer, and there was some push and pull, I guess, the way I understood it is that those were not always happy conversations. There was a lot of, like, grinding it out to get the best deal, that still gets that project to where we need it in terms of pro forma, keeps that rent rate where they need it to get the work done on the building, but then also includes those taxpayer protections. That really is the culmination of a positive effort. I really feel like they've done the homework to make sure that the deal they've brought us is the, is the best possible ask. I mean, had they come in asking for 1.8 million where they began, or three million, every one of us in here would have been a no. There's no question. That project would have been on the cutting room floor. So I really feel like, and I guess I'm grateful for their effort, I think to, really, and I'll say it again, grind through those numbers, to come out with something that is palatable is helpful for us in making that decision, to know that we can create a situation where that building doesn't sit empty anymore, and that it then, when it's finished, gets reassessed to its new finished value, which is way more than it's at. That's helpful for us. Like, that growth is what we want to see. We want to see, and like I said before, the surest way to find stabilization in terms of the mill rate for people for, you know, tax years beyond 2026, is growth. The way to stabilize taxes is to have more people paying into that pot. And if we don't grow, and we stagnate, or we go backwards, we are not going to get where we want to get economically. And so I feel like what we have here is a deal that's way better than it began, and I think it really will pay some dividends and reactivate a space that, right now, is doing nothing for, for us. Thank you.
So we heard a comment on assessments a couple of times here. One of the things that we usually do is bring our assessor up to discuss that part of it, and we failed to do that yet tonight, if so. Mr. Rubel, you could tag team with Gaterman there, but can you talk to the assessment situation?
Well, the property does have deficiencies right now, currently, which is affecting the current assessment on that property. It's a beautiful building, but it's in that point of transition that, that needs to happen. You got office space, which is lacking in this, well, office space in the city, is, there's quite a bit of it, but there's a lot of vacancy as well. And, you know, there has to, you know, when this is done, if this project is approved, the assessment will likely increase because we follow that income stream. So right now, you have a vacant building that's collecting little to no value, you know, that has a direct impact to its overall assessment. We develop all three approaches to value, so you look at that, but typically, when you're looking at a commercial property, you're following that income stream. And, you know, that's, that's where the valuation is at.
If I could just add, to follow up that point, when we talk about the valuation, the assessment going down of this property, from 2023 to now, the property valuation has decreased over 50%. The assessment was roughly about $14.8 million back in '23. It has since decreased to a little under $7.8 million. And what that quantifies to with property taxes paid, in 2023, this property paid almost $382,000 of property taxes. In 2024, that has decreased by 70%. It is currently only paying $155,000 in property taxes. The valuation most likely will continue to go down into '25 if projects are not commenced, or 2026, I should say, because of the two-year lag with how construction happens, it's valued, and the property taxes on it. So at a point, this property is assessed, it is valued based on the approach.
Sorry, Keith, is there something going on with your microphone? Sorry, it's, we're getting some feedback.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, that's better.
Repeat about the last...
Where, where did I get cut off?
Thirty-five, forty seconds.
About what, the...
Okay.
Where did you leave off?
The, the tax is going to continue to go down if there was not development in 2025, '26.
Yep, so if there's not development on this property, because the building is still vacant, it most likely will continue to go down in valuation, meaning that'll pay less in property taxes. Ultimately, what we're trying to do here is stabilize that valuation, increase it back up to 12, 13 million dollars, based on estimates that we received from the city assessor. With this $750,000 forgivable loan, we sized it based on looking at the project's return on investment. In today's current market environment, in order to track the necessary equity, in order to attract the necessary capital, developers do need to make a return in order to bring that project to fruition. So we, we want to be mindful of that and provide the minimum amount of public assistance to maximize... to maximize our private investment. So that was just one component that we looked at, and based on that analysis, the $750,000 is the minimum amount that this project needs to move forward. The second aspect that I wanted to, to relay here is related to the parking ramp. Currently, the city is obligated to provide 480 public parking stalls for this property, and they're receiving no income from those stalls. And that obligation lasts until 2063. So any improvements that are done to the ramp are going to be coming from some other fund of the city. What we've ultimately proposed in the term sheet through negotiations with the developer is we reduce the city's obligation from providing 480 stalls down to 150 stalls. You'll also start collecting revenue from those 150 stalls, approximately about $55,000 annually. That gets you started on an income stream to maintain this parking ramp over the next several decades. But it also gives you the ability to get revenue from the other parking stalls that the developer has agreed to release its obligation of. So you're able to use those parking stalls to an adjacent office building or some other property within the immediate vicinity where you could collect some revenue for maintenance of that ramp. So it's, it's a multifaceted approach that we ultimately took here with developer negotiations. At the end of the day, would I have liked the affordability term to be longer, around 10 or 15 years? Yes, but with the other provisions that we're building into the term sheet, knowing that we're sizing... Oh, sorry. Knowing that we're sizing the public assistance being provided based on the developer's return on investment, that's where Ellers and city staff felt comfortable to bring this term sheet forward for discussion at the common council.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have nothing else to add.
Mr. Rubel, thank you. And we have Alder McElhaney.
Thanks. I just have one question. Is that, this is in a TID, correct?
Yep.
So no, but will you answer that?
Yeah, it is in a TID. It would be coming out of tax increment district number eight.
Okay. So is the building in, in a TID district, I'm just wondering where, so that, that, that would be, anything raised in taxes there would go to increment, not to the levy, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
The parking would come in directly to the city?
Yes, for sure.
So be half in the, half going into the TID roughly, I don't know the exact number, half coming out of the parking ramp. Mr. Neal.
Thank you. Just very briefly, on the subject of, you know, what happens after seven years, I'm sure that Mr. Lockery understands that seven years from now, there's going to be other development in the offing. His marketplace will become more competitive, and when that happens, it has an effect on rates. Competition breeds, you know, affordability, really. It's just a fact that, you know, if we keep progressing, if we are able to provide, to fill those gaps in what we need for housing, that that's going to have an effect on prices. You know, when there's a shortage, then it's a premium. When you're, you know, reaching capacity, well, then you, you're at a more level playing field and things kind of mellow out. So I would say, seven years from now, I don't think Mr. Lockery is looking at, oh, now I can really skyrocket my rents, because I don't think that's going to be feasible. Also, new builds that might be in a competitive mode with him in seven years from now are probably going to have, like, amenities like, like, like balconies and such, which this building cannot have. It's, it's going to be occupying a space in the middle, I think. I think it's a natural for it, and it's a, it's a thing that we need, so I just wanted to touch on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further, we are on the approving of the term sheet for redevelopment of Riverside Place, 11 Scott Street.
You may begin voting. Motion passes seven to four.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dahl. Do we need Mr. Dahl any further? Up next is file number 251013, confirming appointments of the mayor of the city of Wausau to the ethics board. We have one appointment to Mr. Thomas Garver, who's been sitting patiently waiting. I have to give my sincere apology. Normally, this, this item is on the front of the agenda, but there it is. We have a motion from Watson, second from Lukens. Anyone wish to speak to Mr. Garver? Do you have any comments, questions? Seeing none?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you. All right, we have the public hearing, as published in the Daily Herald, was expected to start sometime around 6:30. It is now 9:06, but we're still going to hold the public hearing for the proposed 2026 city of Wausau budget. Anybody here to speak to that? Pre-registered or not, step right up.
Thank you. Tom Killian, 133 East Thomas Street, and I want to speak tonight about the city's TIF strategy, which certainly relates to the budget. And in the past, I've said if something is citizen-driven and data-driven, you typically have a winner. With Wausau's TIF strategy, it is absolutely neither. So it is highly unpopular among our people. Millions and tens of millions of dollars of subsidies funneled upward to the ultra-wealthy in terms of small circles of developers and the people who have conveyed to me that it's highly unpopular. They do live in Wausau. I talked to them in coffee shops, in bars, in restaurants, in QuickTrip, and I'm not sure it's the technical term, but I believe they characterize this local economic development strategy as baloney. And a lot of what we heard tonight, and make no mistake, just because you assert the same fallacious economic development arguments year after year for decades, does not make those economic arguments any less fallacious. And what we heard tonight was grossly inaccurate in terms of how revenue and liability growth works in association with TIF. And we should be giving our people a presentation on how it works, but not the drink the Kool-Aid presentation. Those are not sound economics. We need an analysis like Jerome Segura, the economist, did for Stevens Point data. Without those numbers, we have no idea what our financial predicaments are right now. To do such an analysis, we should be looking at, over the last eight to 10 years, what percentage of Wausau's property value growth has occurred within TIF districts and outside of them? What are the real growth numbers that are inflation-adjusted? What type of increase in the portion of the city's property value was captured by TIF and within TIDS over this period? Once we have those numbers, what does that mean for the city's finances and public services today? Do those numbers show that the fastest-growing property value increases are funding redevelopment, which they are, and not core services or public offerings? Once we have these numbers, we must ask, is that economic trade-off in the public good for the financial benefit of all our people? I would guess it certainly is not, but we don't even have those numbers, and that's nothing personal, but I think we should get them and take a closer look at why our economic situation is not improving after tens of millions of subsidies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public hearing on 2026 city of Wausau budget? Mr. Schmidt.
Well, good evening again. Earlier this, this month, I had the pleasure of speaking with 111 District 5 residents. And in doing so, I'd asked them, do you have any concerns about living here in the city? And the number-one concern was the affordability to continue living here in the city of Wausau. This included the cost of property taxes, water costs, the number of permits and the cost, licensing and fees, the number of ordinances, and/or the lack of enforcement of ordinances, which included speeding, wandering pets, ground feeding of animals, and the appearance of yards. Residents were also concerned about the continued lead service line replacement at no cost to the owner, as promised by the city council. One gentleman was concerned about there being no streetlights on East Union Avenue. Several residents were complaining about the conditions of roads and sidewalks. I live on Parcher Street. That was just redone. Did a great job on that. We really appreciate it. Also, the lack of sidewalk shoveling. This was discussed to me with a blind resident on Sixth Street. She has a really tough time making her way through the city in the wintertime and trying to find a place to get on the bus. Also, several residents who really appreciate our city parks, and they look great driving by, commented on the poor park maintenance. I think that that should probably be looked at as well. Nobody that I talked to suggested that we move forward with 11 Scott Street. If the business owners downtown support this, then why don't they provide the necessary funding? Also, on 11 Scott Street, I'm concerned about the first and second floors. If we're going to build apartments on the third and fourth floors, but the first and second floors aren't going to be occupied, I think maybe that needs to be addressed right away. Well, that's all I have. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. Last call, public hearing, 2026 budget proposal. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the budget, and that'll come to council on November 11th. All right, up next is a closed session. We're going to, we're going to jump to, we're very likely not going to reconvene, so if there are any other comments, well, I guess we have a number, a new item here, and that is announcements from the mayor and Alders. I have no announcements. Do any Alders have any announcements?
I think you can request, click your request to speak button, and then you're allowed. I believe it's one minute.
Request to speak for a minute if anyone's out there. Okay, seeing none. And last chance for comments from citizens, because we will not be coming back after the closed session. One other quick announcement, as far as staff are concerned, we have our HR director who will be there. The rest of staff is not required to stay. We don't have any business coming in here after that. Could I get somebody to read the motion to go into closed session, please? Mr. Martins.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion, we go to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, paragraph one, section F, to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, specifically to discuss an investigation into allegations against a city of Wausau official.
Okay, so we have that motion from Martins, second from Neal.
I can do a roll call vote.
We'll do a roll call vote.
Lukens?
Is this an aye? Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian? Neal?
Aye.
Reiner?
Aye.
McElhaney?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Tierney?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Anki?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to zero.
And we will be designating the HR director, Lisa Noak, as a minute taker, as it will just be Alders. So take, take five minutes.
I'll leave this stuff here.